I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Lou, would you call the roll?
Counselor Garalay?
Present.
Counselor Bouda?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Roderick?
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes ma'am.
On our agenda this evening is Cynthia Avenue Discussion, possible vote on determination of ownership and town services. This is a little different than most of our normal meetings because obviously I would guess that 99 percent of people here are only here for that one issue. What I would like to do is open it up to the people who wish to speak. I'm going to ask you, please be brief, because actually we have a workshop scheduled that's going to take up a lot of time tonight, and I understand how important this is to you, but I want to keep it moving as quickly as possible. So at this time, I'll open it up to the floor. When you come up, please identify yourself and where you live, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Good evening. I believe you all know me. My name's Jim Odell, Warren Avenue. I just want to make a brief statement of fact and then give you a couple of reasons why you should seriously consider this poor decision. I was at that last regular council meeting on December 9th, figured out that there was another problem with another part of town government, and this problem's with our street committee. I found out that because there weren't enough members to make a quorum, they haven't had a meeting in a year and a half. So on Friday, December 13th, I applied to be on the street committee. At that time I applied, I was asked specifically if I was going to do the right thing for the town. I responded to this person by saying that I always do my research before deciding on anything, and I always do what I think is right. Here's what my research has turned up so far. The last street committee meeting, based on its membership, never should have taken It was illegally formed and had no standing. The chairman, our DPW director, Steve Belucci, not only couldn't have a larger conflict, being that more streets that are unaccepted to the town, the less that they would have to be maintained, making the job easier, but it is also a direct violation under Rhode Island General Law Title 36, Chapter 14, at 36141. Declaration of Policy states that it is the policy of the state of Rhode Island that public officials and employees must adhere to the highest standard of ethical conduct, respect, and the public trust, and the rights of all persons be open, accountable, responsive, and avoid the appearance of impropriety, and not use their position for private gain or advantage. Furthermore, our Home Rule Charter states specifically that members of boards, commissions, or committees must be electors of the town of Tiverton. Mr. Belucci is not an elector of Tiverton, lives in Newport. I also found that Section 1213 of our Home Rule Charter states that no elected member of the Tiverton Town Government shall hold an appointed position at the same time. This means simply that Ms. Shabbat also should not have been on this street committee as a voting member. Just with those two members, there was no quorum to hold a meeting. Any street committee meetings held under this membership, along with any decisions made by it, need to be nullified and vacated. I would also like to give the council the following pertinent information for your consideration. I spoke to a former DPW director of the town of Tiverton, who stated to me that Cynthia Ave. was a paved road that was maintained by our DPW for many years. The town approved and signed for telephone poles on Cynthia Avenue in 1960. The town, as a general practice, does not sign for poles on unaccepted streets, i.e. the last two poles on Cynthia Ave., which is, I believe, private, the last 400 feet, they did not sign for. On December 23rd, 1974, the town council again signed a joint petition made by New England Telephone and Narragansett Electric to maintain equipment and fixtures on Cynthia Avenue. Again, it went through our town council. If this street was privately owned, it would have went through the homeowners. My conclusion to this is simple. Based on the facts stated, these people need their services, including plowing, restored effective tonight until a final recommendation is made to the town council by a legitimate standing street committee and voted on by the town council. In my opinion, anything less is unreasonable and unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tights?
Mr. President, I think it might be better to hear from the other side first, and I know they're represented by council, and then respond. Unless you want me to give some introductory remarks as to my view on this, it's up to you.
We can wait.
Okay. I will just let me respond on the street committee. I mean, it was called to my attention that we did have a problem with the membership of the street committee vis-a-vis the charter. I don't believe there's any ethical issues involved here, but we do have a charter issue, which is why the street committee has in fact not met, and you subsequently adopted a corrected resolution, which I drafted, which provided that the town council member, the planner, the public works director would serve ex officio on the street committee, and that we needed five members in the public. And then, that is a fact. We don't have a quorum of members in the public, not from Cynthia Ave. So that's already been dealt with. As far as the substance on whether it's public or private, I'll defer to the latter part of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next speaker.
My name is Shane General. I live on Cynthia Ave. You all know who I am.
Can you just spell your name, please, for the record?
Shane, S-H-A-N-E, General, G-E-N-D-R-E-A-U.
Mr. General, could you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. I purchased my home on Cynthia Ave. in 1997. I've been a resident here since. As long as I have lived here, we've always had trash pickup in front of my house, snowplowing services, including sanding. There's always been street lights and maintenance done to the road, including filling potholes by the town of Tiverton. For example, a tree fell down across the road in front of my house approximately seven years ago. I called the DPW. Without question, the town worker was there and cleaned up the mess. Over the years, on several different occasions, the road was in need of repair. Myself and other residents on the street, again, would call the Department of Public Works. Without fail, a town truck would show up and fill the potholes. Approximately five to six years ago, things changed. All of our services continued except the maintenance of the road. Myself, along with several other residents, would call the Department of Public Works, and we were told that the road was private and that we would not be doing any maintenance to the road. Several phone calls were made to the town hall, as well as residents stopping by the town hall to find out why suddenly we couldn't have any potholes filled. We voiced our concern to the DPW director, Stephen Belucci, on several occasions, and we got absolutely nowhere. On May of 2013, I made a couple of phone calls to Stephen Belucci, expressing the severity of the condition of the road. I expressed how you cannot drive on the road without hitting potholes because they were so large, they went from one side of the road to the other. He said, "Nothing can be done, the road is private." I stated to him, "How can it be private when we receive other town services?" and we have for years. I questioned Ms. Belucci, asked her why Sorty Pond, a non-town-accepted road, was receiving repairs and services to the road by the town, when it was not an accepted road as of yet. No explanation was given, except it would be cheaper for the residents to fix the road ourselves than the higher attorney. At this time, I began to do some research. I contacted Richard and Jean Jennings, the family I purchased my home from. They confirmed to me that during the 38 years of living on Cynthia Ave., the road was always maintained by the town of Tiverton, and I have a notarized letter from Mr. and Mrs. Jennings confirming this. I also have a letter from Peter Chappell here, that lived on the road from 1985 to 1994. The entire time he lived on that road, the town of Tiverton maintained that road. I have the original here. I made copies for anyone who would like to see them.
Okay. Give them to Mary Lou, please.
I also have a plow list showing Cynthia Ave. has been on it for over 50 years.
I missed the first part. Yeah, what?
I also have a plow list.
Oh, excuse me.
You've given us...
I've given you enough copies to go around, is what I did.
Right, okay. So you gave us...
I only have one of that, because I just got that, and it's notarized. I have the original notarized one here, from the copies I gave to you.
Okay. So you don't want to give us the original of that one?
I'd rather not.
Okay, that's fine, but you don't want... Okay.
I will show it to you if you'd like to see it.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're not taking an original that you didn't write.
No, I have an original here. The single copy is an original. I didn't have time to photocopy it.
Thank you.
I've been working night and day on this. So as I said again, I have the plow list here, and Cynthia Ave. was on it. I also have the trash pickup list showing Cynthia Ave. is on it, and with no note of it being private, while other roads are labeled "private." I also have copies of all that for everybody. You can see here, every other road that's private is labeled "private" separately. Meeting minutes from 7, 19, 2011. Town Council President Lambert briefly discussed the current mix of accepted public roads, paper streets, unaccepted roads, and private roads, and inquired about the town's right and responsibility to maintain the roads that have not been accepted. Town Solicitor Tights stated, "It was too late to close the door on some of the public roads, and the town opinioning that as long as the town is allowing building to occur on these roads, it's the town's responsibility to make sure the roads are passable for emergency vehicles," he suggested it be better to fix the underlying problems. Document from 1960, Narragansett Electric, showing the town signed for four telephone poles on Cynthia Ave. That was turned in, that's 2A...
Yeah, we have that.
...on the packet I turned in.
Yeah, we have that.
Petition from New England Telegraph Company for two more poles to be put on Cynthia Ave., again, signed by the town, signed 12, 2074. How can the town sign for poles on property it doesn't own? That was 2B that I turned in to you earlier. A letter from Andrew Tights, town solicitor, to Nancy Mello and James Gonswo, recommended that the town not sign for street poles, as they do not own the land. That was on Bow Frog Lane. That is 2C that was turned in to you. March 21st, 2012. Meeting minutes from 5:21, 1964. It was noted that Campion Ave., a non-accepted town street at that time, it was recommended that something be done to improve the condition of the street. Then Mr. Rose of the town council spoke on behalf of the Highway Department that it would be asphalted that year. That is 2D that was turned in to you. In early spring, 2012, I received a letter from the town asking me to attend street committee meetings because Cynthia Ave. was a street that was not accepted by the town. The residents of Cynthia Ave. attended, however, nothing was determined at that time. We attended another meeting after that, which again, nothing was determined. The last meeting was held on May 10th, 2012, and we have heard nothing since that date. However, I have learned that on February 11th, 2013, there was a reorganization of the street committee due to the committee not meeting town charter. Therefore, we thought our street would be revisited, as well as other streets, because the previous street committee recommendations would be null and void. On December 3rd, 2013, I received a certified letter from the DPW director, Stephen Belucci, that unless we, the residents, grade and fix the road, we would not be receiving plow services. How is that if the street committee meeting has not met in a year and a half and was dissolved because it didn't meet town charter? Then again, we get notification by certified mail that our plowing services will be ceased the first week of December, right before the first snowfall. Very nice, right? Since our plow services have stopped, the road has become a safety issue. We have had cars stuck on, cars and trucks stuck on the road due to icy conditions. Kids waiting at the bus stop, standing on ice. Cars pulling onto the road from Crandall Road, not aware of the icy conditions, until they begin to slide. It is also pulling out from Cynthia Ave. onto Crandall Road is very icy and dangerous situation. One of the residents from Cynthia Ave., who is a veteran, has prescriptions delivered to his home for medical condition, and this week they did not arrive because the road was too icy and dangerous for the mail truck to get down there. Do we feel like we're being discriminated? Absolutely. This is unacceptable for the amount of taxes we pay in this town, and we expect to be treated fairly. On Tuesday, December 10th, it was noted in Newport Daily News that Belucci said the department has never maintained a road. If this is the case, why did we receive a certified letter saying our plow services would stop? In my opinion, all the information I have provided, there is no indication that Cynthia Ave. is anything but a town-accepted road, and should be brought to drivable conditions by the town. Myself and all the other residents want our property rights restored tonight. And it is stated in a lot of places that it's a gravel road. It was not a gravel road, it was a paved road. It's a gravel road because the DPW let it get that way. I also have pictures of the potholes being repaired. I do not have a lot of copies of them, but I do, and I also have pictures of Sorty Pond Road being fixed by the town. In several pictures, you can tell. These are pictures of Cynthia Ave. I only have one of these. And these are pictures of Sorty Pond Road being fixed by the town.
Okay, you can just pass those around. I'll take a look at them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that there's not, there are not copies.
Yeah, they're not, yeah.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kyle DiMedeiras. I live on 30 Cynthia Ave. I'm not going to go into as much detail as the other residents, simply because I could not do the research in time. What I can say is that my deed does not state anywhere that the road is private, that I have to maintain that road. I also have received a town plat from the Tiverton website dated December 4th, so when I downloaded it, listed Cynthia Ave. as a public right of way. The last thing is simply a comment I would like to make that states, when we receive these letters, I believe it was the end of November, beginning of December, stating that our plowing rights are going to be taken away unless the road could be graded and paved. It is physically impossible to pave and grade a road in a week. It's impossible for the residents to gain that money. Clear out the road, make sure it's graded and then paved. It's physically impossible to do that. So why a letter would be listed saying that we have less than a month to do this makes absolutely no sense. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? He's gone.
Yeah.
Excuse me, sir. Was that the first time that you were notified that the street needed to be paved? As residents?
Yes.
That was the first time. It was a month ago.
Nobody said that anything about the town service is going to be stopped because of the condition of the road.
So no one ever talked to you about the condition of the road and asked you to pave it? Okay, thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Nicole Robinson. I own 37 Cynthia Ave. I do have a copy of my title search and my deed, and it states "public" right on it. It doesn't state "private." It's from the Chicago Title Company, the title rundown that they did when we refinanced in 2007. We bought our home in 2004. We never signed a private road affidavit. I've worked in real estate for years. I've seen them come through. I'm not going to lie to you, if it was a private road, I would have never bought. I would, we physically can't afford to maintain the road on our own, and it is a public safety hazard. I have a young child...
I was there today.
Yeah. A young child. She's 15. She got dropped off by a friend that's in high school. Four of them had to get out of the car and push the car down the street because they got stuck. Now, what happens if another child, that is bringing my child home, falls or hurts themselves on my street? It's ridiculous that I can't even trust that my child gets home safe. So I'm asking that something be done. And we do feel like we're being discriminated against, because when we bought in 2004, I called, residents called, and they would come and maintain the road. Not until the last five, seven years have they stopped doing it. So my thing is, if they never maintained it, then it would be a different story. We wouldn't have the right to ask for something, but they've been maintaining it for all these years. So it's not fair for them not to do it anymore. And our taxes are high. We do pay them. It's not that I'm delinquent or current on my taxes. I understand we drive on other roads. That's what we've been told. Taxes aren't only for your road, they're for driving on other roads. I understand that. But when you feel like you're a prisoner in your own home, you can't get off the street, and you can't come down the street, and then in the summer, you can't even open your windows because the dust is so bad. It's ridiculous. I'm just asking you to please consider something. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I did notice on some paperwork I was looking at, and I do have that paperwork, might take me a minute to find it, but it wasn't only plow trucks that broke on Cynthia Ave. that day. It was three plow trucks that broke. And he also states the plow trucks are getting rusty, and they're getting old. You broke three drive shafts in one storm. You think there's another problem? All three of those trucks went on Cynthia Ave.
My name is Mike Nomand, and I live at 31 Cynthia Ave. I've been a resident here for 23 years. I've never seen the road in the condition that it's in, and like everyone else says, they have been maintained all the time I've been there. But I've been taken out of my home in an ambulance with serious medical issues, and if something like that happened to me today, I don't have confidence that these people would be able to get me out of there. And I am a Vietnam vet, so I think I should be treated a little fair, you know, like everyone else would like to be treated. No. It's frustrating, it's just been going on for too long. We've gotten absolutely nothing but answers, sarcastic remarks thrown back in our faces. It's ridiculous, it's totally ridiculous. I was never treating any human being the way that we've been treated. I just wouldn't do that, you know? But I'd really like these people to look into it and do something to try to help us out, because I firmly believe that it is a town road. I was never, ever told that it wasn't, because believe me, I wouldn't have bought either. I wouldn't have been into that after myself, you know? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Next speaker.
Members of the council, my name is Patrick Doherty. I'm an attorney with offices in Narragansett. I represent Audrey Glotti, and I also represent Brian Sanford of Sanford &amp; Sons. I had the opportunity to appear before the street committee back about a year or so ago, when Mr. Tights was also present. And although Mr. Tights and I respect your solicitor immensely, he's got a great reputation, I've done a lot of research, and you've heard from some of the residents, I have copies in my files of every document, with the exception of the pictures that was referenced before you. In addition to that, I have numerous other official town documents, which clearly show Cynthia Ave. as a public street. It's on plow lists listed, it's not delineated as private where other streets are. It's on plat maps, there are a number of plat maps out there, official town maps that show Cynthia Ave. as a street with a termination point and a beginning point. What is going on here before you with respect to the street committee is nothing short of a cherry picking of the most advantageous evidence to the contrary that Cynthia Ave. is a public street that I've ever seen. Admittedly, in prior decades, the town hall's records were not in the best of shape. I mean, I've spoken to your clerk about that, I've done some work in the Land Evidence Records Room, and I commend your present clerk and her staff for attempting to, you know, keep things on the up and up and on board, but I have found an inordinate number of documents which directly contradict what is being alleged by the Director of Public Works with respect to Cynthia Ave. In fact, you know, on behalf of my client, Brian Sanford, you know, you have your town official making allegations that Sanford owns the road, and it's a private road owned by him. That is in conflict to what your solicitor said at the street committee meeting, who opined that it was a private road that was not accepted, or it was publicly plotted but was not accepted. Andy, I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong. It was not...
Cynthia Ave is anything but a town-accepted road and should be brought to drivable conditions by the town. Myself and all the other residents want our property rights restored tonight. And it is stated in a lot of places that it's a gravel road. It was not a gravel road. It was a paved road. It's a gravel road because the DPW let it get that way. I also have pictures of the potholes being repaired. I do not have a lot of copies of them, but I do, and I also have pictures of Saudi Pond Road being fixed by the town. In several pictures, you can tell. These are pictures of Cynthia Avenue. I only have one of these. And these are pictures of Saudi Pond Road being fixed by the town.
Can you just pass those around? I'll take a look at them.
Thank you.
I think that there's not, they're not copies.
Yeah, they're not.
Hi, my name is Kyle D. Maderas. I live on 30 Cynthia Avenue. I'm not going to go into as much detail as the other residents simply because I could not do the research in time. What I can say is that my deed does not state anywhere that the road is private, that I have to maintain that road. I also have received a town plat from the Tiburon website dated December 4th, so when I downloaded it, listed Cynthia Avenue as a public right-of-way. The last thing is simply a comment I would like to make that states, when we received these letters, I believe it was the end of November, beginning of December, stating that our plowing rights are going to be taken away unless the road could be graded and paved. It is physically impossible to pave and grade a road in a week. It's impossible for the residents to gain that money. Clear out the road, make sure it's graded and then paved. It's physically impossible to do that. So why a letter would be listed saying that we have less than a month to do this makes absolutely no sense. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
He's gone. Yeah.
Excuse me, sir. Was that the first time that you were notified that the street needed to be paved? As residents? That was the first time? It was a month ago.
Nobody said that, nobody said that anything about the town service is going to be stopped because of the condition of the road.
So no one ever talked to you about the condition of the road and asked you to pave it? Okay, thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Nicole Robinson. I own 37 Cynthia Avenue. I do have a copy of my title search and my deed, and it states public right on it. It doesn't state private. It's from the Chicago Title Company, the title rundown that they did when we refinanced in 2007. We bought our home in 2004. We never signed a private road affidavit. I've worked in real estate for years. I've seen them come through. I'm not going to lie to you, if it was a private road, I would have never bought. I would, we physically can't afford to maintain the road on our own. And it is a public safety hazard. I have a young child.
I was there today.
Yeah. A young child. She's 15. She got dropped off from, by a friend that's in high school. Four of them had to get out of the car and push the car down the street because they got stuck. Now, what happens if another child that is bringing my child home falls or hurts themselves on my street? It's ridiculous that I can't even trust that my child gets home safe. So I'm asking that something be done. And we do feel like we're being discriminated against because when we bought in 2004, I called, we called, residents called, and they would come and maintain the road. Not until the last five, seven years have they stopped doing it. So my thing is, if they never maintained it, then it would be a different story. We wouldn't have the right to ask for something, but they've been maintaining it for all these years. So it's not fair for them not to do it anymore. And our taxes are high. We do pay them. It's not that I'm delinquent or current on my taxes. I understand we drive on other roads. That's what we've been told. Taxes aren't only for your road, they're for driving on other roads. I understand that. But when you're, you feel like you're a prisoner in your own home, you can't get off the street, and you can't come down the street. And then in the summer, you can't even open your windows because the dust is so bad. It's ridiculous. I'm just asking you to please consider something. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I did notice on some paperwork I was looking at, and I do have that paperwork, might take me a minute to find it, but it wasn't only plow trucks that broke on Cynthia Ave that day. It was three plow trucks that broke. And he also states the plow trucks are getting rusty and they're getting old. You broke three drive shafts in one storm. You think there's another problem? All three of those trucks went on Cynthia Avenue.
My name is Mike Nomand, and I live at 31 Cynthia Ave. I've been a resident here for 23 years. I, uh, I've never seen the road in the condition that it's in. And like everyone else says, they have been maintained all the time I've been there. But I've been taken out of my home in an ambulance with serious medical issues. And if something like that happened to me today, I don't have confidence that these people would be able to get me out of there. And I am a Vietnam vet. So I think I should be treated a little fair, you know, like everyone else would like to be treated. No. There's just, it's just, it's frustrating. It's just been going on for too long. We've gotten absolutely nothing but answers. Sarcastic remarks thrown back in our faces. It's ridiculous. It's totally ridiculous. I was never treated as a human being the way that we've been treated. I just wouldn't do that, you know? But I'd really like these people to look into it and do something to try to help us out because I firmly believe that it is a town road. I was never, ever told that it wasn't. Because, believe me, I wouldn't have bought either. I wouldn't have been into that after myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Members of the council, my name is Patrick Dougherty. I'm an attorney with offices in Narragansett. I represent Audrey Glotti, and I also represent Brian Sanford, Sanford and Sons. I had the opportunity to appear before the Street Committee back about a year or so ago when Mr. Tights was also present. And although Mr. Tights and I respect your solicitor immensely, he's got a great reputation. I, uh, I've done a lot of research, and you've heard from some of the residents, I have copies in my files of every document with the exception of the pictures that was referenced before you. In addition to that, I have numerous other official town documents which clearly show Cynthia Avenue as a public street. It's on plow lists listed. It's not delineated as private where other streets are. It's on plat maps. There are a number of plat maps out there, official town maps that show Cynthia Avenue as a street with a termination point and a beginning point. What is going on here before you with respect to the Street Committee is nothing short of a cherry-picking of the most advantageous evidence to the contrary that Cynthia Avenue is a public street that I've ever seen. Admittedly, in prior decades, the town hall's records were not in the best of shape. I mean, I've spoken to your clerk about that. I've done some work in the land evidence records room. And I commend your present clerk and her staff for attempting to, you know, keep things on the up and up and on board. But I have found an inordinate number of documents which directly contradict what is being alleged by the Director of Public Works with respect to Cynthia Avenue. In fact, you know, on behalf of my client, Brian Sanford, you know, you have your town official making allegations that Sanford owns the road, and it's a private road owned by him. That is in conflict to what your solicitor said at the Street Committee meeting, who opined that it was a private road that was not accepted, or it was publicly plotted but was not accepted. Andy, I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong. It was not formally accepted by the town, and therefore it's not a public way. That's what he opined back, I believe, at the Street Committee. Am I misinterpreting what you said, Andy?
Slightly.
Okay. Well, can you correct me what your opinion was, and just with regard to what you said?
Sure. My position is that there is two forms of acceptance for public rights of way. There is acceptance of public right of way which gives the public the right to travel over the property. And in fact, most of the cases in Mr. Dougherty's memo deal with those disputes, where certain people wanted to say, no, it's private, often on waterfront rights of way, and other people were saying, no, it was shown on a plan, it's a public right of way. And those were the disputes over people's right to travel over it. So it is true that property, it was dedicated to the public as far as being put forth in the initial plan of the property called Cynthia Avenue, and the public has the right to travel across it. And to that sense, it is a public way. But there is a second aspect of public streets, which is that the town accepts the responsibility of maintaining them. And it is that aspect which Cynthia Avenue has never had. And I specifically just refer to 4523-43 of the Rhode Island General Laws, which is dealing the subdivision. And this is codification, but the law was a case law before then as well. Subsection F talks of acceptance of public improvements. Signature and recording as specified in 452364. And that's what the Planning Board Chairman, is that, that's the signature they're talking about, and the recording. Constitute the acceptance by the municipality of any street or other public improvement or other land intended for dedication. Period. Final plan approval shall not impose any duty upon the municipality to maintain or improve those dedicated areas until the governing body of the municipality accepts the completed improvements as constructed in accordance and compliance with the final plans. And it's that second aspect of acceptance for the purpose of maintenance that has never happened here because this was never developed at all into a state where it was suitable for acceptance. And as indicated, there's a lot of contrary evidence that there was even an intent to dedicate it. Some people may have intended to dedicate it, but clearly one of the key owners of the property at the time, who was coming in with a plan to revise how the subdivision was laid out, said on the record that she didn't want it to be a public road. She wanted it to be a private road. So, let me just finish, okay? Then I'm going to be quiet. I said I would talk at the end anyway, but let me just finish here. So that has been my position. Just, it is a public right of way in the sense that the public has the right, that has been accepted. The public has the right to turn down, someone couldn't put up a sign there and say, "Private way, do not enter." But it has not been accepted for the purpose of maintenance by the town. I've not at least seen anything that's been presented to me of any formal proof that the town ever accepted it. There's a fair amount of evidence of things that were done, most of which I believe indicate acceptance of the ownership, not the maintenance requirement. Obviously, that's the whole question for you to decide. And I just want to point out one particular thing. There was quoted memo from me on March 21st regarding Bullfrog Lane, and saying that was evidence that, oh, we, you know, couldn't accept it because we didn't own it. And in fact, they ignore a line in that very memo that says, "The lack of acceptance by the town for purposes of street maintenance would not necessarily preclude approval of this request." And that was a light pole request. So that's what I'm saying. It's totally, one can accept a light pole request based on the ownership that it's been accepted as a public way for people to use, but not, the fact that it is not accepted for street maintenance really doesn't have anything to do with the poles. And that memo that they quoted you was saying that I'm supporting their position actually says just the opposite. So that's, that's my position on it. Obviously, you know, there's evidence both ways, and I cut Mr. Dougherty off before he went too far into it, but he asked.
What I'd like to just specifically address before finishing up the points that I originally wanted to make was with respect to Mr. Tights's statements about Ms. St. Lawrence, who originally showed up and is referenced in some of the meeting minutes for the Planning Board. And Mr. Tights was very good on the law, and which he's well-known for. And one of the laws of the state of Rhode Island as well is that once a plat has been accepted, recorded and accepted in a town, and there is a street laid out in that, and lots are sold with reference to that plat, then that constitutes what's known as an incipient dedication, which is an irrevocable offer of grant of right to that piece of property delineated on that plat as a road or a street to the town. Now, it's up to the town to accept that. And again, there are a number of ways to accept that, and I agree with what Mr. Tights has said. But one of the things also is public use of that road. Now, the town of Tiburon, over a period of decades, has maintained that road. You've heard it from the people that live on that street. They've lived there for decades. There is evidence in town records. There's a deposition of your former Department of Public Works Director where he talks about the decision of the council to provide the maintenance. It's too late, we've already done this, we need to continue on with this. This is the exact situation that you have with respect to Cynthia Avenue, in my humble opinion. The town, I believe, I think there's a very strong argument that the town can be stopped from denying that Cynthia Avenue is a public street by virtue of the plethora of public documents which show it and depict it as such on your town records, coupled with the pattern of activity of the town in maintaining it, plowing it, providing services, coupled with your building and zoning officials granting of building permits and construction of residences to people that own lots that are on that plat. And I have not seen one deed for any of the Cynthia Avenue lots that contains an easement for the use of that road. I don't see anything in Mr. Sanford's deed which shows that he has a meets-and-bounds description for Cynthia Avenue all the way out to the road. It's not there. What we have is a very broad body of evidence dating even back to the 1961 subdivision regulation ordinance adopted by this council back then in 1961, which stated explicitly that private streets and driveways shall not be shown on a plat. The town kept Cynthia Avenue on its plat maps for years, for decades. Couple that with the fact that the town has exercised ownership, dominion, and control rights over Cynthia Avenue by granting Narragansett Electric the easement to put up the streetlights. That's in the official town records. The town treated Cynthia Avenue as its public property, its own property. Now, it's troubling to me. This past week, it was brought to my attention that the Street Committee was formed in violation of the town's charter. And, you know, what does that mean? I'm sure Mr. Tights will tell you. You know, I've been doing municipal law for a couple of decades. He's, he's got more time in it than me. And one of the primary things is that any action taken by a town body, especially under a home rule charter, has to be in compliance with the charter provisions. If it's not, it's something that's known as ultra-virus or outside the authority of the municipality to undertake that activity. And you have a town body that is sitting here making recommendations that affect the economic livelihood of businesses and private persons and residences, and also the ability of these people to convey their homes free of a cloud on title, or rather, not a cloud on title, but an issue with access to their properties that are residents, taxpayers, and voters of the town of Tiburon. And you have a town body that's not duly constituted in accordance with your charter that you're basing your recommendation or your decision here tonight upon. And, you know, you've also got a document from the Director of Public Works. And again, I don't have a cross to bear or an axe to grind with Mr. Berluci, but just looking at the December 11th, 2013, there are a couple of the memo, the inter-office memo, there are a couple of things that I take great issue with in this. And again, I believe it's cherry-picking. It says that Cynthia Avenue is currently in extremely poor condition, and he's right about that, bordering on impassable. Because there has been no roadway maintenance performed on this gravel road in the last year and a half, Mr. Sanford had been maintaining the road before this. Well, Mr. Sanford got out there with a couple of guys a couple of times to fill in some of these enormous potholes in the time subsequent to when the town stopped maintaining the road. He did that as a, to help him, to help his customers, and, you know, as a good citizen and neighbor in the town over there. But I believe that that statement is misleading because Mr. Sanford didn't maintain that road for the decades that he's been living on it and that the business has been there. The town has done that. The Department of Public Works has done that. So that's misleading. You're looking at a memo that's saying half of a sentence here. He, Mr. Sanford had done some things, but very minimal amounts, and just enough to try and, you know, to try and take care of some of these gaping holes. The other thing is that on page two, in the third paragraph, that my memorandum, that because the town has plowed Cynthia Avenue and has performed rubbish pickup over many years, the town owns the road and has to maintain it. That's not the premise of my memo. My memo, and it's pretty lengthy, and I forgive you if you didn't read it. I wouldn't want to read it if I didn't have to myself. But there is a lot of other law, and there is a lot of other documentation that is cited in town records that is not made mention of. And it's not just the fact that they've plowed it and they've performed rubbish pickup. It's that they maintained it. It's that they platted it. They accepted the plat. It's recorded in the town land evidence records. It was approved by the zoning board in 1973, stamped. And the town building official and the zoning officials have allowed residences to be constructed there. You know, the town has a duty to enforce its own regulations. Why if Cynthia Avenue is not a public-accepted road, and why if it's a private road owned by Mr. Sanford, is the town allowed in this kind of thing? The simple answer is because it's not. It's been a public way. It's a de facto acceptance by public use of Cynthia Avenue. In addition, you know, the thing that troubles me, and I, you know, again, I sit on some private boards and, you know, various things, and even a neighborhood association that I belong to. And one of the things I see down here on page two at the bottom is, there's a reference that the DPW does not and has not performed roadway maintenance on Cynthia Avenue within the past 27 years. My foreman has been with the DPW, except for some minor pothole patching at Crandall Road. Well, who's the foreman? Where is he? And how does he have 27 years of experience that directly contradicts what the people that live on this road have? The pictures that are out there? This is the thing. This is a cherry-picking of little pieces of information to put it together to deny that the town has ever done something. Well, it's been in the last five years that they've been backing off of this. And I understand cities and towns, as well as the taxpayers in the towns, have been faced with untenable economic conditions. Who would have ever thought 10 years ago that our cities, towns, our personal situations and our country would be in the shape that it's in right now? Who would have thought that? Everyone is stressed to the max with their personal finances, with their budgets. The cities and towns are just like everyone else in the country. The money is running out, the taxes aren't there from the federal level, you can't raise taxes, you'll lose your citizens if it keeps going on. But this is not a time to further place burdens on these people here that have lived there for decades and that have done so and purchased their homes in reliance on the town's continued maintenance, repair, and provision of services to them as taxpayers of the town. This is wrong. This is not a situation that should be voted on based on this recommendation of the Street Committee or this cherry-picking of facts contained in this report. And again, I have no personal vendetta against Mr. Berluci. And I understand he's got a job to do and a department to run with a budget that's shrinking and less money and appropriations to fill that budget. But these people out here, these are your constituents, and these are your voters, and these are the people that have to live with the situation every single day. And what I see here, when I look at the statements that are being made, that if the town has already maintained it for so long, we need to continue to provide those services, applying to Saudi Pound Road or Saudi Pond Road, and not to Cynthia Avenue because there's attempted revisionist history to make it look as if Cynthia Avenue has always maintained itself, and Mr. Sanford has done it. Not the town. No, it's not ours. We've never exercised dominion of control. It's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. It's arbitrary. It just stinks. And there's no better, lack of a word, or there's no lack of a better word for it than that. You know, with regard to, you know, Ms. St. Lawrence's intent, and again, I got to go back to this. Ms. St. Lawrence, once she platted that land, it didn't matter what her intent was after that, she could say, and she did say, in, you know, according to what is contained in those meeting minutes, that she didn't want the town to accept it. All right? I think that's the, I'm almost positive that's, those are the words, I'm paraphrasing. And that's because, that's an acknowledgement that there was an incipient dedication by Ms. St. Lawrence when she went and put that plat into the land evidence records and when it was approved, that it constituted an irrevocable offer to the town of that land for a public street. And I think that the town, in doing what it's done, and with the voluminous official town documents, which-
Hold on just a second. Okay, I'm sorry.
With a voluminous number of town documents which reflect that Cynthia Avenue is a private road, that it had been maintained, that it was incipiently dedicated, it boggles the mind to me as an attorney that this road can be treated any differently than Saudi Pound Road. I ask that you consider your decision tonight here very carefully. I hope that your decision is such that we're not going to have to come back here and revisit this again. But my clients and I'm sure the rest of the people on this street are looking for some sensibility to the situation and not something that focuses merely on reducing the road maintenance budgets for the town. Thank you. If you have any questions about anything I've said, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I just wanted you to know that I did read your memorandum, word for word. Read the whole thing.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
You represent Mr. Stanford, Mr. Sanford, correct?
And Audrey Glotti.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, what is Mr. Sanford's position about the last 200 feet of the incipiently dedicated 1,000-foot-long Cynthia Avenue, which he's got gates over and which is not open to the public, and he's using his private property?
Well, the position is this, that the town only accepted initially a 600-foot portion which is shown in the town plat map and stamped by the zoning board in 1973, and then an additional 200 feet after that. But as far as the other part, the town never developed it, never maintained it, and didn't do anything to it. So he is basically, he owned that now.
So you're saying that's not public at all?
Not that the last 200 feet. And that's the law. That's the law. When incipient, when property is incipiently dedicated, if the town doesn't act on that, and if it doesn't take over and accept that portion of the road, the rest of it is left open to an adverse possession claim or an exercise of dominion and control over third parties of that particular piece of property.
Okay. Anything else, Andy?
No, that was my other question.
Any other questions of Attorney Dougherty?
Does this statement just imply that the first aid-
Steve, you have to come up here.
I just have a question. I'd like to set that up.
Yes.
I'd like to set that up.
Yes.
Patrick, I just like to- Does your statement just imply that then the first 800 feet, since it hasn't been incipitally accepted by the town, belongs to some third party? I mean, how can you have it both ways?
No.
I misunderstood.
No, that's not my point.
What about the two, first 200 feet? Do you just explain something about that?
Well, I think Mr. Tights was talking about the 200 feet that are the furthest inland portion of the road.
Yeah, and you, how did you describe that?
And I described that as not being accepted by public use or by the act of the town council.
Okay. And the first 800 feet, isn't that a description for the first 800 feet?
Is what a description?
It's the same description. It hasn't been accepted by the town.
No, Mr. Berluci, because you're, the person that held your position prior actively maintained that portion of the road.
That's debatable, yeah, okay.
And the lots that are out there and the properties that come up to that portion of the road, they actively use that. In order for anyone else to have taken ownership of that, they would have to exclusively, notoriously, openly, and continuously have used that as their own property to the detriment of the rights of others, except for-
The public that could use it to go to his business.
No. Well, no, except for Ms. St. Lawrence. Because once a property owner plats a portion of property, they're the only ones that are unable to maintain any kind of a claim to that property, because they irrevocably offered it to the town.
Offered?
Yes.
That's an important word then, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Steve, Steve, over here.
Steve.
Denise, I have a question for you.
Could I sit down? Because I have a lot of notes that I want to-
Sure.
Yeah, please.
If it's my turn.
You just stated it was debatable whether or not that road was maintained before you took on the position. Why do you feel that that's-
I get a long way ago, but first I-
Well, I want you to address that because you said it was debatable as though it wasn't true. So what does make you saying that?
Okay. I've been here six years.
Okay.
We've never maintained that road. That does not mean we did pick up the rubbish and we did plow it. That's agreeable. The road is impassable, that's agreeable. I've been here six years. The laborer or the chauffeur that fills and grades all the other roads in town twice a year that we hire, in the last 10 years, has never filled or graded Cynthia Avenue. Let me finish. All this, I asked-
Wait a minute.
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, Steve, hold on a second. I'm gonna ask the people in the audience, please do not comment while you're sitting out there.
Is there someone else in the department that could have paved the road besides this gentleman you spoke to? Because they're, because what I'm hearing from the residents, that it-
The town never paved it. I'm telling you, my laborer-
Well, fix the potholes.
He's objective, that's 10 years. He's been here only 10 years and every year he's graded the roads. Bruce Fay, who I think you all know, Mike Thornley, I specifically asked him, Bruce, have you ever remembered the town filling and grading Cynthia Avenue? And he said, no. He's been here 27 years. That's all I can offer you. They're not here, that's my word. Speaking to them, I don't know why it differs from what you're hearing, but I am very objective and I'm telling you the truth, absolutely for six years. And I'm pretty much positive that my guys aren't gonna lie. They have no reason to lie, okay? In the past, like they said, I won't deny that there's been a pothole patch as a favor. I can't deny that, I don't know that. What's happened before 27 years, I don't know, but that's coming from us as a model. We live here and we work, they live here, we work here, and that's the truth as far as we know it.
So why are the residents saying that they have had this road patched and maintained?
I would say they do that in order to substantiate the-
So what are you saying, they're lying?
I don't, you're saying they're lying. I'm not lying and my men are not lying. So I, if the two truths don't jive, then the timeline must be off. But my timeline isn't off, because my guys have been here, they know how many years they've been here and they know how many years that they didn't do work on Cynthia Avenue. And I can only go by that.
So he's not here to save himself, is he?
No, and, and so, you know, that's kind of answering the timeline.
All right, Steve, 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 let me ask you a question. I don't know if you've seen these pictures, but they show a town truck, I guess, filling a pothole.
I believe that's Saudi.
That's Saudi. All right, so there are no pictures-
No, 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 we grade, we grade Saudi fine. There's no, there's no argument.
But there's no pictures of Cynthia Avenue?
That's not accepted town road though, is it?
There's no argument that we grade-
We gotta have one at a time. The only ones speak at a time.
Saudi Pond is seventh on the list of unaccepted private gravel roads that are on our street list that we are looking at. Obviously, if it's a private road and the town is grading it and filling it, there's a reason to look at that. There was nine of them on the street list. Five of them have gone to you, or some of you, or most of you as a town council, and you voted five of those nine as unaccepted roads with no services except rubbish picked up. Five of the nine. They were kind of easy roads because the people already knew they were private, all right? This is the sixth. It's not discriminatory. I don't have any issues with Cynthia Avenue, that I've been there three years ago trying to help them out. But, I mean, that's the facts. We have not filled and graded. There may be a pothole patch, I don't know, but not since I've been here. And we have not maintained a private road, other than the maintenance that we did that when I arrived here. We do not work on private roads. Six years I've been here, and it's not on the list, like Saudi Pond's questionable. People will say it's private, but the street committee is looking at it. Both lists, private and public, by far are not, are not exact. I think they were sent to the council in 2005, and Webster at that time said, the list is not guaranteed, we're in the process of looking at them, of looking at ownership, going through the street committee. So the listed isn't exact. But one thing for sure is we've arrived at a place where it's time to determine either you and then probably the courts, that if we pick up the rubbish and we plow it, do we own it? Because coming along, there are 163 other private roads, and probably the 33 that you've already, the councils have already voted as private and no services, because they're gonna come back. And if this attorney is right, the taxpayer has just landed 164 new roads that we never knew we owned, that we thought were private. And what about the rest of Rhode Island? Because if that law sticks, then all the other cities and towns that may have picked up rubbish are gonna end up owning private roads. So it doesn't make sense. And I'm not picking on them, that's how we came to Cynthia Avenue. It was on a list of nine gravel roads, and it was number six, and we're at number six, and we're here.
Number three.
So, um-
No, there's not a list.
I have a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, we're on the side of it. Grab these on the bottom of the table. Any questions from the council?
Can I just, I wanna be absolutely clear here that we're drawing an operational distinction between plowing and trash pickup as services versus road maintenance?
I make a distinct line. I make a distinct line about that. We do pick rubbish up and provide plowing services on many of our private roads, and all of the town roads. But I even, I even believe there's a difference in, as far as the courts determining that difference. I don't believe Patrick is correct in saying that because we pick up rubbish and we plow, that we own the road incipiently or by de facto acceptance or any other word that they're saying. This is the only way we can really accept the road. Two seven, vote to accept the road and accept the maintenance responsibilities. You in the past, and before you have voted to pick up rubbish everywhere, private and public, that's fine. I mean, you voted there. It's been a normal practice. We've promised a lot of private roads.
So what determines which ones you plow and which ones you don't? The condition of the road?
Yes. If they're public, we plow. Then privately, we plow the private one, one and two.
What determines where we got, what determines the maintenance of the road then?
The maintenance of the road would be grading it, filling it.
What determines what roads you maintain, which roads you do not?
I do not maintain private roads. The roads that are listed on our road list, there's 164 of them, except if they received these services before. I haven't changed, when I walked in the door, I didn't go and change any services. Everything that the roads received when I arrived here still receive the same services, unless you voted to change something, and then it will be changed. So Saudi Avenue, I don't know if it's private. I don't know if it's public.
Why don't you know?
You have a list as a private road.
Yeah, you do have a list, you do have a list as a private road.
I think it's a private road.
But you just said you don't know what, what it was.
It's served for a long time. It goes through two towns, and it's difficult. Two towns, two states. You know, it starts in Tivon, it goes into Massachusetts, and it comes out, it's complicated. Each road has to be looked at separately because they have distinct characteristics. Cynthia Avenue is pretty simple. It's all Tivon, it's all one road, and it's, it's simple, it's different than Saudi, and every road's gotta be looked at. Some are unfinished subdivisions.
Right, thanks, Steve, okay.
Yeah, I just, I would just like to request that, I don't think Mr. Berluci should be asked the legal questions of what's private or public. The physical questions of, you know, what he's actually done, the fact questions-
I don't think I was asking him legally.
No, I don't think he was necessarily asking, but he was answering, and I just wanna kind of make that clear, that we're not asking him to say what makes it-
Or a legal opinion on it.
Right, and that was never my intent to ask.
It's really just why, you know, what is he doing?
No, no, I understand.
A lot of legal opinions.
But I wanted to get, thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, Mr. Doherty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, I was hearing legal conclusions, using the word courts, law, and I'll leave engineering to the engineers and I'll leave the lawyering to the lawyers. But what I would like to point out is, you know, and again, Mr. Berluci has been here six years. You have people that have been here decades, and Mr. Berluci is offering you his hearsay from some named and some unnamed people that are over in the town Department of Public Works. And what I'm also hearing is that the reason that the Saudi Pound Road is being maintained and graded and filled and plowed and services maintained over there is that, is because the town had always done that. And what I'm hearing from my clients and from the other residents, every one of them that have been on there for decades, is that the reason now that the town isn't maintaining it is because they stopped doing that approximately six years ago, when Mr. Berluci came into the Department of Public Works. And, and I, again, I'm not trying to, you know, eschmerch Mr. Berluci. He comes in here, he gets a list, and he gets what he has, but there are a plethora of town records that show Cynthia Avenue to be public and not a private road. And the town has acted to undertake the duties to maintain that road and to provide services on there for decades. And it's only in recent history that the town has backed off from that. And I say that it's too late, much like the statement that was made by the former director of Public Works in a deposition in a case. I have a copy, I don't, I'm not sure if I cited that in my memo or not, but in there, it's, if the town has done that for so long, that the town has to continue doing that as a matter of public safety and because the residents have acted in reliance on it. And that's a deposition of Joseph Farias, taken on June 5th of 1991, in the case of Richard L. Blenck at All versus Gilbert Frazier in the town of Tivon at All. The town can't do things and then say it hasn't done them. There's a stoppage to be set up here. The town can't undertake to grant building permits, to provide services and whatnot, and then say that they didn't do it, or oops, we made a mistake. Well, when it's gone on for decades, you've got a heck of a track record there that you gotta deal with. And I could go on and on and on. I'd like to hear from Mr. Berluci, I'd like to respond if I have anything substantive to do with respect to that. But I'd also like you to weigh the comments of the people that live there. And I take great issue with my clients in particular being labeled, or not labeled, but being construed to be making up the truth, to say anything that would be necessary to get this body to vote in their favor and to continue to provide those services. I don't, I didn't detect any liars out there, and I just object to their being labeled as such, by implication.
Okay, I have a question, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Gendrow. How long have you lived on Cynthia Avenue?
17 years.
Okay, was it paved when you bought?
It was paved, and that's why you don't grade paved roads.
Okay, I have a question then. All right, because then, again, I haven't been here for 17 years, so when the pavement, I'm sorry, come on up, sorry, sorry. When the pavement, I guess, deteriorated and fell apart?
Yep.
What happened?
We used to call it DPW, they'd come down and fill the potholes.
How long ago was that?
Um, anywhere up to seven years ago. It was taken care of.
Okay, but I'll tell you, I drove down Cynthia Avenue, and believe me, I know, I only got about a quarter of the way and had to turn around because my car would not make it.
It's, it's-
But I have a question for you. If it was paved?
Yep.
All right, what happened to the pavement?
It started to deteriorate. If you go in front of my houses where the pavement is the best, and you can still see pavement there.
Yeah.
I have pictures there that show the pavement very clearly. Some of it may not be in the best condition, but some of it shows pavement.
So I think what adds up is nobody repaired the pavement.
Yeah, I'm saying, over the years, once it went, nobody repaved it?
We tried to call DPW to do something about it and repave it, but nothing got done. We've got nowhere. We've tried to have street committee meetings, and that went nowhere. So that's why we tried to call, come to the town hall, I contacted Mr. Berluci, and he told me I'd be better off paving it myself than hiring a lawyer. That's his exact words. Be cheaper. Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Gendrow, just one question. When do you, I've been up recently on your street.
We all have.
About two or three days ago, and I had the same experience as Ed. I got up about maybe half the street and I said I'd lose my car, so I made a U-turn in somebody's driveway and came back out. But my question was, how long has it been in essentially that condition? How many years?
A year and a half, it's really gotten, the last year and a half, it's really gotten It's getting to the point where it's impassable, cars are getting stuck on it, they have to be pushed off of the humps that are on there, a low car. It's unacceptable for the taxes we pay in this town, and the town's been taking care of that road for 50-plus years. 50 years, that's a long time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Gendrow.
Anything for the council?
I don't know where to begin.
I don't know where to begin.
Can't wait. Just a second, Mr. Gerlach. Be brief.
I just have a couple of.
Use the mic.
I have a couple of points I'd like to bring up. The first is Warren Avenue is the same era as Cynthia, so I'm sure Warren Avenue is also officially listed as an unaccepted street. Is that right?
No, it's accepted street.
Okay. Well, the second thing is Joe Farias is the DPW director, the previous one that I talked to, and he said that that was a paved road. He said it was a maintained road. They used to do pothole fill on that road every year, just like every other road when Mr. Farias was DPW director. He's my excavator. That's how I knew to talk to him about it. Uh, the second thing is if we've maintained this road all these years and filled potholes, doesn't that mean we've acquiesced to accepting the road? I mean, we've maintained that road for many years. I don't know how Bruce says that there's never been anything done on the road, but Joe Farias was the DPW director, and he said that road used to be maintained. And I drove on that road about 15 years ago, and it was in a lot better shape than it is now. I went on that road also with a three-quarter ton lifted four-by-four truck, and I could just about make it all the way down that road. I ask all of you councilors this. If you lived on that street and you were told the week of a snowstorm, you better grade it if you want it, if you want it taken care of. I don't know what any of you people would say, but I know what I would say. And I've been in construction for almost 30 years, and I'll tell you this. If you can get Betiminus concrete this time of year, which I don't believe you can, I'm pretty sure the plants are shut down by now, number-two demo gravel, also known as road pack, is only going to hold for so many weeks before it's going to have to be done again. You're asking these people to take a lot of money out of their pocket for something that the town should have been maintaining. There was a precedence of the town maintaining that road, and all of a sudden, in the last five or six years, it hasn't been maintained, and now you're asking these people to suck it up on their own. It's not right. It's morally wrong. Thank you.
Mr. Gerlach?
This is just more kind of commentary. I've had my questions answered so far. I, I think what we have here is a situation where, and I completely sympathize with everyone, is that I don't, I don't think we can do anything about misgivings in the past, and I think what we have here is a, is a situation where things were probably not done up to standards, or perhaps the standards were not established or well adhered to. But, you know, my personal feeling is that, I think, based on the evidence that has been talked about tonight and the fact that there are so many legal document, there's so much legal documentation that designates this as a public roadway, I think we are hard-pressed to argue anything other than that. That given, coupled with the fact that there's a very well-established historical precedent of maintenance and services that have been here. Now, that being said, I'm absolutely sensitive to what sort of Pandora's Box this opens up for the town. And I don't know if the 160-some-odd other private streets or roads that is on our list has the same kind of legal and historical precedent that Cynthia Ave has. So, I mean, I can't see how we can.
In your opinion?
In my opinion, in my opinion, yes, my opinion.
Can I, you haven't even heard my side of it. Yeah, we will, we'll get there.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm making, um.
Before you can make your opinion.
Well, I'm making my opinion up to what's been presented to this point, so I guess I'll shut up and let people continue deliberating here.
Sir, my name is Jim Koster, and I live on Bulldog's Lane. And I'm neighbors to these people on Cynthia Ave as well as Saudi Pond Road, and my road, not to jump on this bandwagon, is in the same kind of conditions. And I sympathize with these people, and I gave up this fight a long time ago with council members. So I applaud them for, for continuing on, and I think they are correct. And what you said earlier, sir, as far as this being somewhat of a debacle from years past, I agree. But I don't think that residents in town or these people on Cynthia Ave should be punished for any of these things.
I completely agree with you, yeah.
I don't think that was your intent. But this becomes a quality-of-life issue. I've been dealing with it on my laneway for several years. I've supplied Mr. Sanford tonight with a court deposition that has past council people in it, past DPW workers, past DPW directors who acknowledged that these roads were graded twice a year. These roads were plowed, these roads were sanded, they were taken care of. From council to council, these things have changed over the years, and I think that's part of the problem. I don't think it's the time or place for finger-pointing at council members, at Mr. Berlucci. It's just the time to solve the problem. I pay taxes in town, so does everyone else. We all agree they're high, but I don't think that services that were once accustomed to are now being taken away in all cases. I agree with Mr. Berlucci. This will open up Pandora's Box. Maybe that'll be a good thing. These roads need to be addressed. Again, I think it's a quality-of-life issue, and I would encourage you to take care of these problems in town.
Thank you.
I'll be very brief, I just have one question.
You can bring the mic down.
I just, I just have one question for Mr. Tights.
Yeah, actually, you direct it to the council, and we'll ask Mr. Tights.
Okay. I'm Madeline O'Dell from Warren Avenue. The city committee, uh, street committee voted to do this, stop the services. But Mr. Berlucci is not an elector of the town, so how is it that Mr. Tights was able to appoint him on that committee to make that vote in the first place?
Okay. I obviously didn't appoint Mr. Berlucci to the street committee, and I think I've already answered that.
We also just want to make a comment that the street committee doesn't have any actual authority to implement policy. They just make recommendations to the town council, who then makes or takes action or doesn't take action. I just want everybody to make sure they understand that.
And I just want to say, I think the letter in front of you is from the Director of Public Works. Request, request to, uh, my recommendation to have Cynthia Ave voted a non-accepted street and to remove all services except rubbish collection at Prandale is not from the street committee. It is from the Director of Public Works, and I believe under the town charter that, that I operate the roads. I think I do have the ability to bring this to the council, and I only brought it to the council because of the issue last Thursday and the culmination of why I'm not plowing and why they think, why the residents think that we should be, I should go in and fix that entire road. To have the ability to plow, it has to be determined, but I believe under the charter that it's my decision not to plow the road because I have to protect my equipment, and my request to the council at this present time is my request. So it's not referred to recommendations, or it's not referred to any issues to do with the street committee. I did learn a great deal by sitting on the street committee about Cynthia Avenue. I learned a great deal by spending time in the town clerk's office, and I spent a lot of time talking to the residents. I said, I don't think any of them can say that I've been rude or been nothing but kind and trying to be helpful. This is a contentious issue, of course it is. And I really take objections to saying that anything I've done is to make my job easier. This certainly doesn't make my job easier. And, and I'm here, hopefully, to settle it.
Steve, did you say you stopped trash pickup on that road, too?
Big five?
Did you say you stopped trash pickup on that road? Is that what you just said?
No, no.
No.
No, no.
Trash is still.
The gentleman that just came from.
No, it's picked up all the way down, I noticed today, right?
Bullock's Lane is listed on, on, on the list of no services. Okay? I mean, that's why it's, it's very similar to Cynthia. See, that's the problem. Bulldog's, it has.
Actually, we're only discussing Cynthia Avenue here tonight.
I'm just saying, yes, well, we were at Bulldog.
Steve, we're only discussing Cynthia Avenue here.
So let me just start. I've been here six years.
And, and, before you go, and I'm going to ask you to be brief. We've got two major items coming up, and I want to at least get some more discussion from the council on this.
All right. Six years, you've got my word, we have never maintained the roadway. You collect rubbish, you see it, you plow, guaranteed. Three years ago, I went to Cynthia Ave and met Mr. Mike Norman in. His complaint was, his neighbor across the street on Cynthia Ave was building a big stone wall, and he was spilling it out into the road. I went there, I told Mike, I'll try to help, but it's a private road, I have jurisdiction. I told the guy across the street, you have to have, you have to have your lot surveyed, you have to move your wall on your property because I have to plow it. So I'm trying to help out. Guy builds a road, continues to build a stone wall right along the edge of the road, 12 to 12 feet. Is it you?
It's me.
10 to 12 feet into the layout, all right? He's occupying that much of the layout, the town, the roadway layout, and he finished the road. Didn't listen to me, I had no jurisdiction, so I couldn't force the issue. I even asked Garrett to help me. Garrett couldn't force the issue. It's a private issue between the lot owner and the street owner. Doesn't have anything to do with the town. So if I can finish. So that's how I was introduced at Cynthia Ave, and then I was reintroduced on the street committee. I agree that the street committee is, has issues. I shouldn't have been on it, da-da-da-da. So there's no arguments there. You're hearing a lot of definitions, and the one that kind of keeps hearing is public road, public road. This document says public road, that says public road, you accept it as a public road. Well, as I describe things, I'm going to use like four definitions, and I think that they are correct. A town-accepted road is a road that the town owns, that the council voted to accept. So when I say a town-accepted road, accepted road, you voted or your past predecessors voted on it. When I say public road, it's a, it's a road used by a public. It can go through private property, it can go through public property. If the public has been driving through your field and you owned it for 10 or 12, 20 years, then legally, they really have a right to continue to go through there. It's, it's public. It's not town-owned, but it's public. A private road, obviously, is private property, distinct line, public property, private property. And then we get into paper streets where they are, it could be an unimproved town-owned area that's, that has trees on it, or it could be, it could be a road that was layout by a subdivision and with a promise or an offer or dedication that when the subdivision's done, town may or may not accept it at their choosing. So that, that's the words I'm going to use. So Cynthia Ave, from everything I've researched and found, is a 20-foot-wide gravel road that fits in a 40-foot-wide layout. It's 1,000 feet long. It showed, it shows it on a plan submitted by the original subdivision, which would be Mr. and Mrs. St. Laurent. It's, it's not been accepted by you, by the town. It's privately owned, it's publicly used because the public drives their cars down there and services the auto repair shop down at the end, and the residents use it. So it is used by the public. So it is, in my sense, a public road. The reason it has a street sign, because every street in town has a street sign, because it has to be identified by 911 regulations. Every street has a street name, so the fire department knows where to go, the police department knows where to go. The street name really means nothing about ownership, you know, whatsoever. The history of Cynthia Ave is, all of the land around Cynthia Ave and the, I'll call it junkyard, was owned by the St. Lawrence. That extended from Prandale Road all the way back to Cornell, a paper street that's kind of an extension which you accepted last, last week. Really, people out of land. It was subdivided. Originally, there was a road going, a dirt driveway going into it, and there's records of it being a dirt track. There was even records of the, of the town plowing it. It was later developed into St. Lawrence Junkyard. The subdivision was built, the road was platted, as we say, 1,000 feet long and 40 feet wide. Blocks were sold, hopefully, money was made, and this road was maintained, was, and I think you've heard in the past, there may have been potholes who were patched. I don't know if you even have pictures. But as far as grading or major work, the department has no records or no knowledge going back 27 years of that work being done. We plow it, we sand it. The last 200 feet of that 1,000-foot road that was dedicated or offered to the town ends up going directly into Sanford and Son's junkyard, and it's enclosed with a chain-linked fence. So you have a 1,000-foot road that's supposed to be dedicated to the town, but yet 200 feet is occupied and fenced in by Sanford and Sons. Which leads me to believe that he's occupying 200 feet of the road that was dedicated, or it's not dedicated or was dedicated. I really don't know. So that continued, and eventually Sanford and Sons, Mr. Sanford buys a junkyard and property, and Mr. Sanford is the son-in-law for the developer. So now we have a road that's never been accepted by the town, to my knowledge, has been picked and maintained by Mr. Sanford. He's the only one I've seen out there with a grader or a front, front-end loader or bucket truck or something filling the holes, and we plow and sand it. So consequently, if, if, if I'm made, the department is made to go ahead now and do major road work, I believe it's going to really constitute acceptance. Because if we go ahead and do major work on a private road, dig it up, put in a base, pave it, maybe put in drainage, I think the courts are going to recognize that as a type of acceptance. So I have a line drawn right now where I feel if we go ahead and do major work, I've taken the ability of the town council to decide acceptance and really stacked it on this, on the side of the courts. So putting all of this together, I really feel that it is exactly like and, or very similar to 33 other roads that have been voted the same way. And if we don't continue to go in this route, then we're offering different services to different people under the same circumstances. My job is try, trying to be upfront, honest, fair, and equitable on all my decisions. And that's why I've decided when I walked in the door that we do not service private roads. By maintaining service, I mean patching, filling, you know, anything other than picking up the rubbish and sweeping because the line is slippery, and, and once you start doing favors and going over that line and treating people differently than other people, this is where we end up. So that's why I'm recommending that, you know, we eliminate the services except rubbish pickup. I cannot go in and fix that road now because it's too far gone. I cannot go in and fix that road now because it's too far gone. It's been overfilled. The drainage basically drains off the road, squandered into people's property. There's no control over the water. There's a, as you heard, a paved road under gravel, which no drainage can go through. It's going to continue to be like it is. That's why we haven't touched it, and it's why it's going to continue to be an issue. And again, it's a hundred and sixty-three other roads that are private. And if you want me to stop reading them, I'm going to-
Steve. Steve, all right.
I'm not going to read.
No. We're only addressing Cynthia Ave.
We're addressing Cynthia Ave. Right now, if I go in, it's going to cost $60,000 plus engineering and legal.
What's that going to cost the residents?
It's going to cost you $100,000, or it's going to cost other taxpayers.
Steve, excuse me. I'm not going to ask you again. I know, excuse me, Steve. And I know it's difficult, I know this is an issue that everyone is riled up about. But again, we can't have people yelling for all that.
He can't respond either then.
So I was just saying that that's the line where if we decide to spend $65,000 to go ahead and make this road acceptable, where you can accept it and I can continue to maintain it, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money out of your pocket. But I honestly don't believe that the public, the rest of the taxpayers, would want to spend-
Steve, don't talk about the rest of the taxpayers.
Yeah, that's what we have to make-
You have to make that decision.
Right.
Well, that's, that's, it's hard.
Okay. Again, and this is going on and on and on. Okay, that's good. I'm sorry, you want to say something quickly?
Yeah, just a couple of things.
Yeah, Steve, who are you?
Kyle DiMideris, 30 Cynthia Avenue. I came up because Mr. Belucci brought up the rocks on the road. Just a couple of things I want to mention. Where the rocks are from where the rocks are back, my family has maintained that portion for about forty years. Those rocks are also in line with a bedrock that is, that is inside the ground, never been pulled out, that'll bust the road. So he's talking about, he wanted me to move the rocks because he wants to plow that. He can't plow that because there's a giant bedrock that would break his truck if he went over it. So that's the only point I wanted to make. The other point is, the rocks also are in line with about maybe thirty, forty-foot-high trees that have never been cut down. And the, not the gravel, I'm sorry, the pavement that is on that road ends right where those rocks are. Not before that, it was on a grade. And I put those rocks there for two reasons. One, when I bought my house four years ago, the town of Tivon told me I had to get rid of a perfectly good cesspool and replace it with a septic system. So I had to do it. So I did it. I didn't have the money at the time to pull those rock, to dispose of those rocks. Also, as Mr. Belucci said, the water drains off on the side of the road. It drained and flooded. I literally, when it has a heavy downpour, I have a moat in my front yard. Put those rocks there, it helps actually remove that, some of the dirt that built up so my yard doesn't get flooded. That's why I have the rocks there. Furthermore, the road which has been plowed, which was plowed last year, is plowed up to the rocks. It was never plowed any further than that because prior to those rocks being there, the plow would have fell sideways into my yard. So the road has always been plowed up to those points. Now, has the rocks caused an issue yet? Have they caused an issue? That's something that I'm not disputing. All I'm stating is that the part of the road that was maintained ends where I put the rocks. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on. Hold on.
Yeah, no, I know, but I don't want him to leave. Go ahead. No, wait, we got to change today.
You know what that means? We've been on this entirely-
It's gone far too long. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I just, so where, what number are you as far as how far along? You said it was, it was plowed up to where your rocks are. So where are you? What lot, what?
Oh, uh-
Do you know what your lot number is?
One-seventy-five, I think.
Second lot in on the right.
Yeah.
Number three. Is that lot 103?
103.
Oh, I'm talking about the edge of the road, not the end of the road. So the width, I'm talking about.
The width?
Yes. That's, that's all I'm talking about.
But the plow went past your property and furthered towards the end of the road?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, okay, I just, that's not what I heard.
It just didn't go edge to edge, if you want to say that.
It didn't go the full X amount of feet, standard road is supposed to be.
Across.
Across, yes. Because there was never-
That's where I turned around.
There was never a physical, there was never a physical road there to actually plow. It always taped it off. Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, sort of make sure I understood.
Okay. Houseless.
Yeah, I just have one statement to make. My name is Mr. Belucci, stated that when he came in to be DPW director, he said that he wouldn't service private, private roads. But there is another road that has been serviced. We have evidence of such, it being maintained. That's all I have to add.
Mr. Lambert?
I'll try to make this brief. Whatever problem we have at Cynthia Avenue, we can multiply it by at least sixty-three. Am I correct, Mr. Belucci? We can probably multiply it by much more than that. At one point, Mr. Belucci has indicated that we have about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and sixty-three unaccepted roads in Tivon. So roughly one-third of our roadways are unacceptable. It doesn't really even make any sense for the 21st century community. It really doesn't. And if we don't address this issue, not only for Cynthia Avenue, but other roads as well, this issue is going to come up for another town council in five years, or ten years, or fifteen years, or twenty years. It's not going to go away. And I've been assured, I don't know how this is possible because I've been on Cynthia Avenue, but I've been assured that there are other roadways that are in far worse shape than Cynthia Avenue. That being said, my hope is that we address this issue of the unaccepted roads and the private roads the way we've addressed some of the other recent issues that this town has had to face. And I think that when we face some of these problems, some of these issues, eventually after we've come up with a plan or a program, it really don't seem as bad as they were. We find, we find a way to address the issue. And at some point, that's what I'm going to suggest for this whole issue. We have to, as a town council, come up with some sort of plan or program that will provide a way that these streets become acceptable to the town. So that the town accepts, I'm not just talking about Cynthia Avenue, but all of the streets that are in this situation. We have to bring those streets up to a condition through some plan or program that will allow the town to accept them and have the town in a position to be able to fund, if necessary, the initial repair of those streets and the subsequent maintenance of those streets. That's what you need, I think, in the 21st century community. We cannot, as a town council, address the variables of every Cynthia Avenue that we have in town. This was a fine presentation. It made clear to the town council what the issues are. But apparently, according to Mr. Belucci, and I'm sure we can all confirm this, there are at least another sixty-three Cynthia avenues. And I don't know how many private streets are being maintained at this point, but at least there's the possibility that there's another hundred and sixty-three streets out there that we might be presented with at some point. It's just a major problem that the town council is just going to have to address in some sort of special meeting, not only for Cynthia Avenue, but just to once and for all get this whole issue behind us.
Okay. Just a few comments. Being thrust into the street committee, first got on the council, it was a rude awakening. The street committee was in operation before I was elected, over three years ago. So my understanding of what the street committee was doing was to evaluate all the roads in town, do the research. And there's a big list. So they did research on those roads to see if the town council, by vote, accepted the road. And that is the definition of accepted the responsibility to maintain the road. So that, a lot of work was done before I even was on the street committee. And there are other street committee members here. And the easy roads were done right away because they were easy to find, that the road was accepted. They were in meeting minutes for the town council, said the person who owned the road would come to the town council and offer to dedicate the road to the town. And the town council would say yea or nay that they accepted the road. And if they said yes, it was based upon a decision that the road met the standards that were in place at the time the road was built. So there are standards to acceptance of a road. And then we'd turn to the DPW director and say, does it meet those standards? And the DPW director would say yea or nay. And then the town council would make its decision to say, yes, we accept this road as a public road, and we accept the maintenance of that road. And that's what, that's what's critical here, is to whether it's accepted as a public right-of-way or is accepted as the responsibility of the town to maintain the road. Now, in the packet that we received from Mr. Belucci, there is a pathway for unaccepted roads to be accepted by the town. And that's the Section 8, Unaccepted Streets. And this is, this issue is with roads, unaccepted roads, is not unique to Tivon. You can find it in any and all cities and towns in many states. And they all struggle with this situation. So there is a pathway, and it basically says, you build the road to meet town specifications, go through the process for dedication to the town. Town council accepts or does not accept the road for maintenance. So there is, there is documentation for that, and there is a pathway to go there. Now, I know that from personal experience because I built in this town in 1990. It was a paper road at the end of Ledger Lane. And I went to the planning board, I went to the town council many times to say, can I just have a private driveway to my front door and not have to build a road? And I was told, you have to build a road. So I spent $13,000 building a road a hundred and eighty feet long. However, twenty, forty feet wide, whatever it was. $13,000 to do that. Now, I couldn't even start to build my house, and it's, it's all part of the ordinance. You can't even start to build your house, get a building permit, until you say you're going to build the road, put up a surety that says, I'm going to build the road, and if I don't build it, there's this X amount of dollars that will pay for the town to build it. And then you can get your building permit, you build your house, you build your road. It's approved, it has to be inspected, has to be inspected again. Once you lay out the gravel, you have to get that inspected. Then before you even put the binder down, after it's, put the binder down, it's inspected again. Then you go through the process of getting it approved by the town for maintenance. Now, I've argued with my husband several times, as to whether we own the road, or the town owns the road. And I say, we dedicated it to the town, and the town council accepted the road. And the reason why we did that was because if we didn't, we would be responsible for the maintenance of that. If we, it was required that we build the road, we built the road. We could have left it as private, but that would mean to me that I'm responsible for the maintenance of it. I could get it plowed, but I would be responsible for the maintenance. So I needed to dedicate it to the town. The town council approved my road so that they would be responsible for maintenance. I have, the town has paved my, my road. But my trash, I have to bring up to the top of the road, as well as I have to pick up my mail at the top of the road. So I don't get total services on my road. My point is this. Thank you, I'll get to the point. If I had to go through this process, how many other people in this town, how many other residents also had to go through this process of footing the bill to build a road? I'm sure that there's many more than me that have to privately build their own road and then make a decision as to whether it's private or public. That being said, so I'm certain there's going to be unhappy people all over the place. Because if I didn't have to build the road because the town should build the road, then why did I build it? And I want my money back.
Excuse me.
So I think times change. Way back when, in the 50s, 60s, there's been a lot of town councils, DPW directors, there's been a lot of, hey Joe, will you just plow my road? Here, Joe, will you just fix my road? Here. It's who you know, who lives on the road, why some of the services were done. Some of the dirt roads were plowed because maybe there was a fireman that lived on the road and they needed to have access to get out to the main road. It may have been a policeman. So they paid, they plowed the road in order to get that person out to the, to the main road. So there's many reasons for it, and it's, it's a lot of history. Now, is all of it, was it all done correctly? Was it all done fairly? Was it all done fairly to the rest of the residents in town? I don't know. That's long before me. I've only had to deal with this since 1990. And I know it's hard. The, the street committee went through the easy roads, and now we're down to the hard roads. And that's, that's where you have to make decisions. The town council has to make decisions as to how to proceed with the rest of these, these roads. Because, and that's why the street committee was asking residents to come forward if they have documentation. And we started off the top of the list and said, come forward with documentation that said, you know, the town accepted this road. And if they didn't provide any documentation, we moved on. So this is just the top of the list, there's a hell of a lot more to go. So yeah, it's, it's a, it's a big issue. And it's, it's like Steve says, I think it's just a whole can of worms. But you have to remember, I don't think the town is in the business of building roads. That's not the town's job to build a road. The contractors build roads and go through the same process of build the road, get it accepted by the town, or leave it as a private road. So the only way the town gets involved in building roads is if the contractors bug out, and there's a surety, and the surety is there for the town to build the road. So I think you, us as a town council has to decide, are we going to put up the money to build these roads that were left by contractors, by builders, that have been left in disrepair?
Mr. Roderick, could I add one more comment to what I was saying? It'll be very quick. I want to make a distinction between Mrs. Shabbett's situation and even my situation. Mr. and Mrs. Shabbett decided on their own, between the two of them, that they would put in a paved road. My wife and I decided as individuals, we would put in a paved road. But the situation is very, very different when you already have ten houses on the road and people have been living there ten or twenty years. Or in some cases, I've heard of roads, these similar roads, with twelve and fourteen residences already on the roads. That's why I'm saying that this is- That's why I'm saying that this is really a town issue. And it's an issue that we're going to have to address as a town and as a town council so that we don't have this issue cropping up every few years, whether it's five years or 10 years or 20 years. This is the time to really get a grasp of this whole situation.
Mr. Palatier?
Oh, me? Okay. Sure. I have a, just a couple of questions and then hopefully that'll turn into something more substantial. Steve, walk me through the physical structure of this roadway. Is there any drainage on the roadway?
Yeah, no, the roadway has no drainage. It's basically direct gravel.
Yeah. Typically, what, what are the standards for when we, because I know we have standards of what we will accept in a new, a new road that's been put in?
No, the, the owner has a choice. If the developer owner wants to maintain it as private, they could always-
No, I don't care about that. What I want to know is what are the sta- when, when, when a developer comes to us and says, here's a subdivision road I've put in place.
Yeah.
What are our, what's the checklist? What are the criteria? How wide does it have to be? What's the base coat going to be?
So that's what I'm saying. If, if the developer chooses to keep it as private, he could build a gravel road.
Right. Steve, and that's not what I'm asking.
I'm asking you, if the town is going to accept the road, what-
What are the criteria?
It has to be paved.
Yes.
Under that pavement would be four inches of dense graded crushed stone, quarter inch. Under that would be eight to 12 inches of gravel burrow. It would all have to be sitting on a stable foundation, not peat, not mud, not anything. It'd probably be 24 feet wide. It would have monolithically poured bituminous sloped curbing. It would have drainage. It would have lighting. And it would come with all the approvals necessary for the houses to continue to be built with, you know, DEM drainage, I mean DEM approvals and the lots have been approved, you know, and perked and so that, for the town to accept it, it has to, it has to probably have a 40-foot right of way because you need 24 feet of pavement, at least five feet of clearance on each side. Sheer into a 40-foot right of way, a 24-foot paved road, three and a half inches thick and the rest I described with drainage, lighting, the works.
Are there, to the best of your knowledge, any, any roads that we've accepted that don't have drainage or don't have those things?
That has been accepted?
Officially accepted roads.
Yeah, I would say a, a lot of the roads in town don't have drainage. We don't have a great deal of drainage and drainage pipes in our roadway systems. Most of them are country drainage, they drain off.
So we've accepted these roads that don't have-
We've accepted, we've accepted roads. They're old roads, all up north.
Well, so is Cynthia Ave, is an old road.
Sid- 64, yeah, 65, yeah. But drainage is absolutely necessary. Otherwise you're dumping water on private property or the road is going to erode. So that's why it's required.
But they, there are some roads in town that we have accepted that do not have this drainage.
Ah, yes.
So, but you're saying that Cynthia Avenue, it's absolutely necessary they have drainage when these other roads didn't have to have?
Well, it's part of the subdivision regulations as far as acceptance. To be accepted, what can I say? To be accepted, it has to be have drainage, it has to be paved, I think that's-
But what you're saying is we have accepted roads that don't, roads that don't have drainage in the past?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'd say that's correct.
That's my question. So we have accepted it, but now we have a different criteria that they all have to have drainage to be accepted in 2013.
Yes, this, this criteria that it just-
And who decided that? You as DPW director.
Decide what?
That all the roads that we accepted from this point on have to have drainage.
Madam Counselor, may I, may I direct something here? What governs that or your subdivision regulations that are adopted by the-
Right, but, but these are already, but these are already roads that are in existence.
Right, but they probably were accepted 60, 70, 80 years ago.
Without drainage.
Right, when this, when these regulations didn't exist.
Were in effect, should they be in effect now?
Right, but we have accepted roads that don't have this drainage recently. That's, I think that's my question.
Recently, I, I would, I would say no, the roads you accepted recently had drainage.
That was my question. Okay, that's my question.
Yeah, required.
Now, who does own this road? Who owns Cynthia Avenue? So if the town is saying we don't own, who owns it?
That's a question for Andy.
That's, that's my-
Before we go on.
No, we'll come, we'll come back to me. She's coming forward.
Who owns the road?
I believe that the town owns the road. It has been given to the town. The town has not accepted the obligation to maintain it, but it's owned by the town in the sense that it's open to the public to travel on. If someone wanted to build a stone wall across it, blocking it, or would, they could not do it because it has been used as that public way. That's the part that I agree with, Mr. Doherty. All those cases, it's been used as a public road all this time so that the town owns it. And as I said, my belief is the law is that we do not, along with that ownership, have the obligation to maintain it. That's the question. Now-
Do you have any case, case law to support that conclusion as Mr. Doherty has supported in his conclusions?
Yes, I do. The cases that Mr. Doherty talks about are for the most part dealing with the use of the road and the travel over it. They're not dealing with the maintenance of the road. The statutory language explicit-
No, some of this case laws, I believe specifically stated about acceptance.
That's right. But I'm saying, but as I said-
Due to, due to services provided and over the years such.
Right. The services provided, the legal acceptance which made, those were the cases, the services were provided first and that's what made it and gave it the right of the public so that people couldn't block it off and keep it as a private road. It's the backward situation from what we have here. There's two kinds of acceptance. There's acceptance of ownership for the public use and then there's the acceptance for maintenance. And I think, you know, as you heard to some extent from Counselor Shabbat, the idea is you only accept the roads that you know that are constructed properly. I mean, I think we had a good example and it, a lot of these people who were here left us at the last council meeting before Sandywoods came in, where you had the proper procedure for, which is obviously newer, it's come since 19, the 1990s and the 80s, where you come to the town council and you got the reports and said, yes, we saw this road being built. It has the proper subgrade, it has the proper base compacted, it has the proper depth of pavement. And I think that's the concern here. The question is, apparently this road may have been paved, but to what standards was it paved if it was never, it was, it never held up is what we're hearing. It was constantly patched and now it's-
Well, I can, I can speak to this. I lived on Deion Avenue for roughly 27 years, moved to in 1986. As long as I've been there, the road was, has never been paved or repaved, I should say, until this past summer. 27 years later, since I can recall. If I've been, well, much, probably, it's probably longer than that. Now, there was a section on that road where it was actually starting to deteriorate in the sense that it was turning into gravel because of someone pumping water into the street, whatever the situation is. So if that continued to go on over time, guess what? You'd have a complete section of gravelled road.
We, we had a section of the road at Born Mill that turned into a wetland because over time, wasn't maintained, there was water on it and it became a legal wetland. And the developers of Born Mill had to get a wetlands alteration permit to restore it to the pavement. So I'm not disputing that. And in fact, there isn't, the town does not budget capital funds for road maintenance. A lot of other communities now, that's going to require taxes. You don't have the money to be able to do the catch-up on your roads in your ever basis. The only way to do it is with a bond funding and have a major improvement. That's what you're faced with. So you need to pick and choose in the meantime what you have with your piddly little couple of hundred thousand each year for the worst of the repairs that have to be made.
Well, one reason why we're here tonight is a lack of consistency. And a lack of consistency is basically what streets get serviced, which streets don't. And there was a decision made not to have a street serviced. And the issue with that is, is if you make a decision for one street to get serviced, then any other street with the same qualifications also should not be serviced as well. And I think that's part of the reason why we're here tonight.
That's exactly the reason.
Is that Cynthia, Cynthia Avenue is, has not been serviced and there's other, and there's a road in close proximity of this road that is be, has been serviced and evidence of such and is being serviced far as I know.
There are different elements to that road. First of all, there's two things. One, as Mr. Belucci said, we haven't gotten to that road yet. Saudi Pond Road may get shut off as well.
Well, that's, that's, that's to my point. You have, you have a road that has similar, similar characteristics to Cynthia Avenue. No one who knows, no one who owns it, no one who fits private, so on and so forth. So why can't one decision be made for all those types of roads?
Because they all have different fact patterns. This is one of the few cases where I have seen on the record, planning board testimony of the developer that it was to be a private road. Now, is that controlling? No. That's only one of several factors. I'm not saying that's the be all and end all. But that's certainly rather unique that I, I have not seen any way in any of the other situations here in Tibbetts. That's the only one, this is the only one of the Tibbetts roads where I've seen that, that we have recorded testimony of the developer that it's to be a private road.
No, she wanted it to keep it a private road because she didn't want it to be accepted. And, and there was no decision made that night, which is also in the minutes.
I understand that.
Based on that.
I understand that.
So this is because she wanted it and doesn't mean it made it so.
That's what I said.
Okay.
I said that. It's only one factor.
Well, you are-
But that's why I think you have to look at each one of these individually, which is why I, which is why we are here tonight. And I, I would like to see more of the stuff. I just heard about a deposition from a 1991 case. I would like to see a copy of that. I haven't seen that, that was not provided yet. I guess you didn't get it till tonight.
I'd be happy to provide it.
You know? We have affidavits from some of these people which use the term, the road was maintained. And that isn't really clear what that means. Does it mean that it was, do they mean that it was plowed and sanded? Do they mean it was repaved? What do they mean? Those are more things that certainly would be good to know because there certainly is at this point, a discrepancy among the statements as to how much it was maintained and by when and by who. But that's what you're here to do. I think you have to do it though, when you get down to this, the town councils before you made the easy decisions. The ones that were all explicit, they were found, council records, stuff was accepted, they found that. Stuff going back 200 years. Council appointed a group of men, they were all men in those days, to go out, survey the road. The report came back to the council saying, this is the layout that we've laid out the road and the council ordered that recorded in the land evidence records. Okay? That's acceptance of the road. There are, there's history of this stuff going back. Those were all made. There were the other ones that were alluded to that were real clear, that were servicing only two or three houses and were clearly driveways. The councils before you made the easy decisions. You're on the hard decisions that I don't think you can have unless you're going to take a pol- unless you're going to take, what I do think would be an unfair policy to say, okay, well, we're not going to, we're not going to do anything with any of them or we're going to do all of them, which means you're going to have to pay for it all. I think you have to do just this. You have to have a case by case example of each particular situation and see what is the right thing to do for that particular situation, that road.
Mr. Palatier?
Yeah. I just have a couple of questions, Andy, about legal stuff, just so I understand a little better. This incipient dedication, I'm, well, needless to say, I've never heard of it before.
Fascinating stuff.
I'm sure it is. What exactly are the implications of, there, there's this, this idea that the offer is made to the municipal body as to, you know, here you go, if you'd like it, it's yours. If there is no action, what is, what is the legal ramifications of doing nothing? Or not so much doing nothing, but not explicitly stating, we're not accepting this road? Or we are accepting this road? Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, I, I believe there are, there are two different answers to that depending on the acceptance. As far as the ownership and making it public-
I'm just talking about maintenance. I don't care about the rest of the stuff.
Maintenance? I, I do not believe that a municipality can insipit- can impliedly accept a road for maintenance purposes by its actions. Okay? I believe, yes, you can accept it as a public street by use. In fact, it doesn't even have to be the town council. If the people use it for 20 years, it can become a public road by that use. But for the obligation of the taxpayers of the community to pave and patch a road, I believe can only be done by explicit action of the town. A vote of the town council or a vote of the town meeting as the case may be in prior, prior government years here. That's, that's my view of the law. I may not, I'm not sure everybody agrees with me, but that's my view.
Okay.
Because, because that's the point. It's, you can't, you can't put that burden, you would never want a municipality to be saddled with future financial burdens by simply not doing something. The same reason that someone can't get adverse possession against the municipality. If we have a, some area out there, a park, and somebody's put their fence onto our park and using it, even if they're using it for more than 10 years, you don't get adverse possession against the municipality. And so my belief is that analogy, it's not the same, but the analogy holds true for the obligation to maintain a street.
Okay. I mean, it certainly, we have a, I won't say it's a pair, it's, it's a number of policies and ordinances and regulations that recently addressed these things because we have had these problems before where there's a gray area as to whether or not the street is accepted, what the process was. So we have delineated very specifically what that policy is and what that protocol is for a developer or someone who's a single homeowner that wants, you know, an, to extend a, a paper street and all those sorts of things. So what?
It gets more complicated. We have streets in this town that are laid out in places where they streets are not.
I know, I know.
So it, it's a consequence of having a community develop over several hundred years.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. And, and some of them came from exactly what you're talking about where it, it's on paper that it goes like this and actually it goes like this. And, you know, for whatever reason, that's just how it happened. And we can't resolve all of those problems. But what I'm, what I'm trying to boil this down to is when this street was built and when it was at least implied that a dedication was offered, there was no action in the record of the municipal government accepting the responsibility of the road, which leads me to believe that for some reason they didn't want to. So, you know, because we're all friends and neighbors and this is a, a small town, over the years, services get extended to those areas because we don't necessarily have a form, or at the time, 40 years ago, 50 years ago, have a formula for this methodology. So plowing happens and trash pickup happens because that hap- that, that stuff happens. And the maintenance of the road one way or the other, whether it's grading, filling, et cetera. So we're, we're at a point today where we have an unaccepted road. I don't think anybody on the council would disagree with the, the statement of the town council has not officially formally accepted this road in a motion by the town council. We have not found any documents to that case. But there's this area of concern as to whether or not it's implied by years of action and whether or not it was sort of de facto accepted by all of these, all of these things. I guess what I'm saying is we have to make a decision as to whether or not this is an accepted road. We have to make a decision as to whether or not it's suitable or we're going to, I mean, there, there's only so many things we can do. And what I'm trying to do is lead you to click, clarify for me what, within the boundaries of what we've set up in this municipal government, are our options for resolving disputes like this or, or concerns like this? I mean, we have to either acknowledge it's acceptance or not. I think if we did nothing, that's worse than making a decision one way or the other. To continue to just ignore these sorts of roads, and I'm only speaking of Cynthia Avenue. But if we accept this road, it has to be up to standard. Or there's got to be an implicit agreement that we're going to bring it up to standard before we, before we accept the road. And I don't think that we've ever done that before. And we maybe- uh, before we accept the road. And I don't think that we've ever done that before. And maybe we have. Um, but I don't think that that's ever been a policy, implied or otherwise, of, of the town. So I don't know that there is a halfway point where the road can become passable without formal acceptance or without coming up to the standards in which we hold every other road to. Because what we've been doing for the last 30 or 40 years has just kind of been kicking the can down the road. We're at the end of the road now. Um, I don't think after a meeting like this, we can say, well, we're just gonna keep doing what we're doing. It's just obviously not gonna be the case. Um, so a decision based on those parameters, I don't know where we are. I don't know if there's an alternative. I don't know if there's something that gets us to a safe and passable road surface that isn't quite $65,000 worth of road work that's not gonna happen till the spring anyway. I don't know. It's, it's, it's further complicated by, Steve doesn't work for us. His department is not under our purview. We can't direct him to do anything. So this body has to make a decision, I think, as to whether or not this is an accepted road or not. Is that?
Well, I do think you have a couple of alternatives.
Thank you.
Because I've been thinking about it during the course of the last two hours.
And this is the quietest this room has been all night, so I hope I'm not terribly boring.
I have a question I'd like to ask.
Maybe my voice is, my, the tone of my voice may be calming to some.
I'd like to ask Mr. Belucci a question, if I could, before I answer your.
I can't compel him to answer.
No, I understand, but, Mr. President, if I might.
Yes, yes, you may.
Steve, is there, what do you estimate the cost would be to regrade the current gravel, crumpled up asphalt mix of stuff that's there? To regrade it to a condition that you could safely plow it this winter? Not talking about repaving it, town standards or anything like that, but just, do you, does it need truckloads of gravel brought in too? Does it just need a grader? Is it something you have in stock?
I think the process of bringing gravel in and dumping it on what's there and grading it obviously doesn't work because you see it. I think the road has to, I call it reclaimed. We did it with Deon. We come in with a machine. It basically digs down 12 inches and pulverizes and mixes everything up. So we, you have to pulverize and mix that old pavement up and, and make a new gravelly, nice, hard surface. In that case, um, again, I think you're gonna have to haul material out because it's, there's so much fill in there that now all the water is just gonna flood the private property. So it's gonna take removable water material. You'd have to shape some slopes on the edge of road to take the water with it.
Steve, Steve, that's my, that's my second question, okay?
$40,000.
Just to be able to plow it for the winter.
Yeah, because it's gonna cost 60 plus to pave it and do all that work.
Steve, can I ask a question as a layman?
Yeah.
I have a road that has big gullies in it, big swales through it, okay? And I don't have money to pave it, re-chew it up, grade it. If I lay, fill in all those holes and swales and lay gravel and stone dust over that temporarily, because we're not talking about this to be permanent.
So we could plow it.
Just so, so it's passable and plowable.
Right.
Okay. Roughly, what would that cost?
Well, we could do it pretty cheaply. We have all the material and we could come in with our trucks. But I just caution you again that if we do major repairs on private property.
Steve, 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 Steve.
Well, I'm worried about the people that live there.
Steve, what we're talking, we're just asking a question.
Yes.
Okay? I'm saying, if you were to do that.
Right.
Estimate of the cost.
I would estimate 5,000, 4,000, but I'm gonna be back in less than a month doing it again.
Okay.
Okay? That's my honest opinion. This is not gonna last. It's on blacktop. It's just gonna get wet and fall apart. You'll have big puddles. That's what's happening constantly.
Okay, so, 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 so is your answer that it would be 20,000 for the winter? Because you'd have to do $5,000 four times, for, for, each month? I'm just trying to find out what, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
If that's what it is, but you're not, it's, the road's frozen. So you're putting material on a frozen material that will melt. It's, it's tough, it's tough. We can keep it. Um, we can maintain it. There's no doubt about it. There's no doubt about it. But we're gonna be.
Okay, I'm just asking, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to, to, to see if there is.
Cynthia Avenue, we can certainly take care of this. You know, if you want to.
Okay, but in your.
We have it, fill it, degrade it, and roll it. The DPW has that capability. There's no doubt about it.
And you're talking about $5,000 to do it, is what you've said?
If you wanna count the cost of our man and equipment.
Yeah, yes, I do, I do. I wanna know what the cost all in would be.
I would say, yeah.
Okay, all right. And but you then you think you'll have to go out in another month or so. It won't last the whole winter. You'll have to go do that a couple of times during the winter?
Depends on what, what the winter is.
Uh, okay, all right. But just, in an average winter, you're gonna have to do that two, three more times? Is that what you're, that's what I'm hearing you say?
I would say, yeah. And we'll be adding material and making it higher every time.
Because it's frozen, so you can't scrape off the high spots and read.
Already, and we're gonna be adding more material and making it higher.
But I'm just asking, you can't scrape off the high spots because that's.
I would have to rent heavy equipment. My equipment can't do that, no.
Okay, all right.
No.
Do you have that idea?
A greater, a greater $2,000 a day, up to $2,000 a day, get a grader.
Okay. And how many days would it take to?
It would just take a day to do it, you know?
Okay. Is that what Mr. Stanford did? Did he have a grader?
I don't think he had a grader. I think he had maybe a, a backhoe with a, that kinda grader with a backhoe and picks it up. I'm trying to answer for him, but I don't think he had a grader.
You don't know. That's, that's fine. If you didn't know, you don't know. All right.
Mr. Stanford shaking his head too.
All right, so for, so would, 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 would $7,000, would $5,000 of your gravel and man and $2,000 of a grader rental do it for the winter?
It'll do it one time.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but if you scraped off the high spots as opposed to simply putting more in, would that help it last or not? I'm not, I'm not, I'm the lawyer, I'm not the engineer. If not, just tell me. I'm just asking the, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, even though it sounds that way.
Nothing is gonna last.
Okay.
On that road. And it hasn't lasted. For the six years I've been here, the road has always been, not as bad as it is now, but it's always been bad, you know, unless it's.
It's never been like that.
It's tough. It's a tough road. And, um, but if you're asking if we can take care of it, we certainly can take care of it.
We could, we could make it passable and plowable.
I can make it passable and plowable. Yep.
But, yeah, okay, I understand. I mean, that's a policy decision as to whether to do it or not. I'm just trying to find out. And then you're talking about $40,000 or more to make it passable as a gravel road, if you were redoing it as a gravel road.
Rebuilding it as a gravel road.
And, and 60,000 as a paved road?
That's for the work, not for the engineering and legal.
Okay.
Because obviously it has to be engineered, designed.
Surveyed.
And that's not including any, and that's not including any drainage, is it?
It's $100,000 to, to bring the road up with legal and engineering.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's.
I just, I just want to.
That, that'll be my note.
I just wanna do it because, because I'm, I'm, I'm being asked, I think, you know, what are the various alternatives?
There's a lot of alternatives. And, and the one thing that I, I, I think I sent you all an interoffice dated December 16th summarizing what it is gonna cost to bring the roads we own.
Steve, 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 that is not for discussion here. Okay, we're only talking Cynthia Avenue.
We know what's gonna happen.
Okay, we, we, we know, but we're only talking Cynthia Avenue here. Okay. Um, before we go on, I'm gonna ask the library, if you're willing to stay. We may run a little longer. Otherwise, we reschedule. And I'm gonna ask the fire department the same thing. Because I'm, I'm not gonna be here till midnight, I'm gonna tell you right now.
It's already now. Barbara wants to come back.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that this is important, that you need to finish it up. I will come back when you need me to come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And the library, I appreciate it. Again, my apologies. But I, I think, again, I don't wanna cut this off. You know, we've reached a certain point and I wanna make sure that we get to it. Um, so we will have to reschedule the workshop on the budget for the library and the fire department. Okay? We'll get a little housekeeping done at the same time. Okay. Mr. Palatier?
He's done.
Well, I, I don't think I answered the question.
You're attorney. You never do. Oh, I'm kidding. Sometimes do.
The answer is yes and no.
Yeah, that's right. Maybe.
I, I do think, I mean, you, you do actually have the ability to do, to do nothing at the moment. Um, I, you have the ability to decide that this is not a street that has been accepted for maintenance.
Hold on.
I would just argue that those two things are the same. You know, the, the, the result of those two actions are the same.
Um, for the short term, they are.
Yeah.
For the short term, they are. That's right. To do, to make that decision formally or do nothing would have the same effect. They would not be being provided the services at this time. And it appears that they would then be faced with that alternative, whether what we've heard is, you know, a short term fix that would be able to satisfy, I mean, I, it's, it's hard to negotiate a compromise here in public, but I, I think that's a possibility. Is if the residents wanted to come up with some of the money to do the short term fix so that the plows could get safely down there, then the town could say, we're not doing this as a permanent thing, but for this winter, if you fix it enough so that the plows can get safely down there, we'll keep plowing it. And then that provides the time to deal with it over the longer period of time. The other thing you can do is you can vote to determine that it is, um, you know, has been accepted by the actions of the town. Um, and in which case, then you have an obligation to maintain it. And then Mr. Belucci's gonna see what, you know, he can do, may determine that it's, if you make the oblig, if you make the decision that it's towns accepting it or has accepted, you could, you'd be deciding, one decision would be that the, by the town's actions, it has previously accepted this. And the other thing would be to say, notwithstanding anything else, you can just vote now and say, you know, we want, we will accept it, because you have that ability. You have the ability to waive the standard to say, okay, we'll accept it as is. Um, and either of those two instances, Mr. Belucci would have the responsibility. And then he might decide just to do the quick fix right away, or he might decide to do more of a, more of a permanent fix right at the beginning, since he feels the money would be wasted, everything would wash away. But either way, it'd be the fix, you know, that would be some other piece of road that would not get done if, if this were done. But that's, that would be the responsibility. Um, so those are kind of the, the four things. Do nothing, say that it has not been accepted, not accepted as a town road. Say that it has been accepted by the past actions of the town, which is actually the one thing that I would not recommend. Because I think that would have implications for every other road. Or the fourth thing, say, notwithstanding everything else, you're gonna vote to accept it irrespective of whether it meets the standards or not. You're making a decision today that you want to accept it. Not based on whether, what has been done. So those, I guess, would be the alternatives that I see.
Could I ask whether there's another alternative?
Hey, um, Demadeiras?
Could there be an alternative where, I agree with Mr. Lambert, where this is a, a lot bigger problem than just Cynthia Avenue and when we have to address all the streets and we have to come up with a plan, probably a capital plan at some point. Is there another alternative where we could, because I'm worried about public safety and, and the, and the residents on the street? Could we repair it enough so Steve feels it's safe to plow? And meanwhile, start a plan on what we are gonna do. Get the street committee back together, league with, with the proper members, and go forward with that. But at this point, I was there today, and the chief assured me that he can get down any road with an ambulance. But he would have a hard time, I, I believe, because I did not make it a quarter mile in, a quarter of the way, and I got stuck, completely stuck. I backed up and I got out of it, but it took me a little time. Now, if someone's stuck and an ambulance is trying to get down there, that's gonna be another issue. So is there a way that for this time, that we could somehow repair it enough so that we can get down there and then get together and really decide what we're going to do about all of this? But for this point, I think that this is a public safety issue for Cynthia Avenue. And that's what I'm asking. Is there a way that we could do that? Bill?
I think, I mean, if you're asking, I, I think what it would require is a sign off on all the residents of Cynthia Avenue, that they acknowledge that essentially we're continuing, we're agreeing to disagree. The fact that the town would be doing this would not be something that would be construed as.
As accepted.
Anything, that's correct. Effectively, it'd be inadmissible. If we end up in court over, it'd be inadmissible as evidence. If they were willing to agree to that, I, you know, would think that would be the only way to do it.
And Mr. Roderick, Mr. Teich, that was the option that I was gonna ask, if that was legally possible. Because if we find, if we find that this is not an accepted road.
Everyone, every one of the, the property owners would sign. If one property owner didn't agree, then we couldn't do it.
Well, that, that gets to another, another issue that I, I just wanted to address with you. Uh, again, even if we find that this is not an accepted road, I'm not necessarily sure that that's the right thing to do. To simply tell these people at this time of the year that you have an unaccepted road and it's your problem. I agree completely with Mrs. DiMeadiras that there really is a public safety issue here. And I think the public safety issue would, would, would urge the town to get us past, get, get the residents at least past the winter. And then, as Miss, Mrs. DiMeadiras has suggested, we, we begin looking for a long-term solution to what really is a problem. We can address this. And I think that, I, I think there's people in this town smart enough to come up with the suggestions and the proposals that'll allow us as a town to come up with some resolution for this problem, not only for Cynthia Avenue, for other streets as well. We can come up with a solution, but we have to get past this winter period. And that, that's why I join with Mrs. DiMeadiras in suggesting that we get the agreement of the, of the residents, that this can in no way be held against us, not used against us in any way, but that as a public safety issue, Mr. Teich, that we would address, address this immediately as an urgency for the next three or four months.
Okay, Mr. Dari.
Mr. President, may I request, as a representative of at least two of the abutters, that this be a bilateral waiver and bilateral inadmissibility? I'm, that you're talking about this shall not be construed against the town to constitute an acceptance and that you reserve your rights, but on behalf of the abutters, I think we would have to reserve the exact same thing. Otherwise, it could be construed against us if we acknowledge on behalf of the.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it would just be one sided.
Yeah. You know, and, and I will speak my opinion. This, this situation, and again, I will only speak to Cynthia Avenue. Um, I've been down the road and, and it's horrendous. There's no if, ands, buts about it. Um, one of the issues that I think causes me pause is that nowhere has this town accepted this road. For whatever reason, it was never voted by any council to accept this road. And over the years, and I know some are newer residents on Cynthia Avenue than others, over the years, I'm wondering why it was never brought before the councils to say, why aren't you accepting our road? And, and I, and I know that it's, some maintenance has been done, potholes were fixed, whatever. But what I've heard. but what I've heard about Cynthia Avenue over a long period of time, that the road was never really good.
I'm sorry, can I speak? When we bought, the road was fabulous. And in front of my driveway, I'm across from Shane Gendreau, I'm at 37, there is pavement there. When we bought, the road...
Can you come up to the mic?
Yeah, sorry.
Just identify yourself again.
When we bought in 2004, on Nicole Robinson from 37 Cynthia Avenue, there was pavement. There was pavement. Like he said, over the last six years, but I bought in 2004, so we've been there nine years. So, three years after that, they were maintaining. They did put gravel, what you say, gravel or whatever, but there was pavement. And like I said, I never came to the town council to ask for it to be accepted because on my deed, it says it's public. Nothing stated that it was private to me. I had no, no way of knowing this until we got the letter from the street committee stating that the road was going to be looked at. I had absolutely no idea it was a private road. To me, it was a public road. I bought it, the town's been maintaining it, and they did when we first bought the house. So, I honestly, to me, I, I'm still, like, just, I can't even be able to tell you, we're young homeowners, to have a cost, another cost like that, I get it, it's going to cost the town money, it's going to cost me money. We don't have that kind of money. And who's to say, God forbid, we want to ever sell our house? Do you really think somebody's going to buy it? Nobody's going to buy it. And if you don't disclose that to another buyer, that it's technically private, they're going to come into the same situation feeling the way that I do. And it upsets me that he can say he doesn't maintain private roads, but yet you're across the street on Saudi Pond Avenue maintaining it. So either you guys have to make a decision, you're not going to maintain any roads that are unaccepted, private, whatever, or you're maintaining all of them, because it's just not fair. Absolutely not fair. And that's the thing that I think upsets all of us the most, is you can't say you're going to do it for one and not the other.
May I give a point of information that's important for you to understand, just based on her comments? She made a reference to her deed saying that Cynthia Avenue was a private road. I've seen what she has.
Public way.
Public, I'm sorry, a public road. It's, it's a title insurance policy issue. Her deed, I don't think your deed even references Cynthia Avenue in status.
No, it just has, like...
It's just a meats and...
Yeah, it's just, it's the insurance policy.
But the title report and the title insurance policy states that it's on Cynthia Avenue, a public street.
Yeah. Okay. But again, you know, so, so those are issues that I think that this council needs to address. And the other issue is that we have a lot of streets and towns that aren't getting any services at all, and we're going to have to look at this in the big picture, so to speak, and say, "What, what makes a road acceptable?" Quote-unquote. We have an ordinance that tells us that the road surface must meet certain requirements and so forth and so on, which we know Cynthia Avenue does not meet. So, you know, so we can vote to accept it as is, but again, as a council, in the long term, must we look at every gravel road, every dirt road, every path as acceptable as is? You know, so those, those are the types of issues that we have to look at. And you, as taxpayers, and I as a taxpayer, have to think overall, if we're going to do something like that, you're talking probably millions of dollars to, to bring every road, whatever, up to what we consider the new standards. So, whatever decisions are made, you know, in the long term, it would have a major effect on this town. And I agree with Ms. Demadeiras and Mr. Lambert, and those who know me, I always talk about, we are responsible for the health and safety of this town. And by driving down that road, like I said, I don't know, and I've got a sedan, I don't have a truck, you know, I'm not as lucky as some people who have big, you know, high-wheelers. I have a sedan, and it's new, and I heard the bottom scraped several times, and I got to a point, I said, "I'm not going any further. I've seen enough." But I think Mr. Teich's suggestion that we come to some sort of compromise to at least get us through the winter so we can address this in a forthright and logical manner, as opposed to, if we were going to sit here tonight, and I'm going to say, under the gun, so to speak, and say yea or nay on Cynthia Avenue, I think there are a lot of open legal questions that need to be decided. And I personally would hate to put this town in jeopardy by making a decision without having all the facts and looking at all the legal ramifications. But it, for health and safety reason, I believe that to get Cynthia Avenue through the winter, something needs to be done. Yeah. So, again, I'm not sure how we would go about if, if we can get into some sort of discussion and negotiation so that we're all in agreement, and then we can, as a council, look at the broad picture and figure out how are we going to resolve this in the long term? You know, even if this council decided tomorrow, or tonight, to accept Cynthia Avenue, there's no way we have the dollars to fix that road immediately. So, it's, whatever is done is going to be a stop-gap method in, anyway. So, again, I think I will listen to the council and what, what their suggestions may be, and then we can put it in the form of a motion to enter into some sort of discussion and negotiation very quickly, obviously, to come to something to, just for the health and safety, to get that road passable and plowable through the winter. Anything from the council?
I agree with all of your sentiments, Mr. President. I think what, you know, I can personally, speaking for myself, willing to make the commitment to work to address the broader issue with the time that we have left on this council, I think if we bring a mindful approach to it, fair, equitable, logical, as you put it, I think we can make substantial progress in this area. It just has to be fair and equitable across the board, and we do not make rash decisions that compromise the town's position, the taxpayers' position, or individual residents' position. So...
I think Joan can probably speak a little more eloquently on this, but I would just caution this body and the public from assuming that we can paint every one of these gray-area streets with the same brush. It's not going to work. It hasn't worked in the past, and we really do, if we want to serve this town and the residents on those streets, need to look at each individual situation and each individual road, and, and have to put the research and the time into doing that. Otherwise, it's arbitrary, and it may have the appearance of fairness, but it is neither fair nor just to just sort of stamp them all with the same, the same, you know, designation. So I think this council, I think it was actually on Jay's suggestion, early on last term, that we take two or three every meeting. I don't know, we didn't get very far...
No.
When we started to get the really tough ones that needed a little more work and needed more...
And Brett, on reconsideration, that was a crazy idea.
But, but we acknowledged at the time that this is a very serious problem, and what I'll say, without trying to insult anyone that existed before today in any official capacity, or any homeowner or landowner capacity, is that this body and these residents are trying to fix the problems of 50 years ago, and the decisions that were made or not made 50 years ago, and I'm not lecturing you, but I'm just looking at you. And so, that's a very difficult process that requires a lot of thought and consideration, because those issues, it's, it's fine to say, you know, that XYZ did ABC, but that doesn't change where we are today. I don't care who plowed what, who paved what, how much gravel the DPW put in there, how much gravel a resident threw in there. You know, we have a problem today, and we're going to have a problem tomorrow with a lot of these other roads that need some definitive resolution. And the best I can say is, we're trying to fix problems today that occurred long before, long before I was even born, aside from what it looks like up here. And it's very difficult to claw back time and try and resolve things that should have been done, or if we had the chance to have done. And, I mean, that's evidenced by the very prescriptive language in the, in the subdivision regulations, the, the way we accept roads now in town, and the bonding insurity that we put on these, from simple little roads to homeowners' associations. We have really tried to wrangle with this in the last three to five years, because this is a nightmare, and we all are living through it, and we all have to maintain some level of decorum and civility when we do this, because it's the only way we're going to come to an equitable agreement. We work for you guys, and so, we're really having to make decisions that impact both you and the rest of the town, and do it in the context of what we're legally and, and financially able to do. And we try, and I, I speak only for myself, but I, I want to include everybody in this, we always try to do the responsible thing, and we really do look towards what's best for the town of Tiverton. That was very long-winded, but so what.
I think Mr. Teich, I think what's at issue is, first of all, if, if the residents of Cynthia Avenue are willing to, you know, enter into some sort of a, you know, agreement. And I don't believe that every resident of Cynthia Avenue is here, unless I'm wrong.
One is.
One?
There's a plot line next to mine, property. I don't know if that guy...
It's for sale.
Yeah.
And he's not here, he was...
So there's two not here?
I have.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Okay.
One not there.
Okay.
You know, obviously, we would need, you know, 100% agreement, so I'm not sure how we would facilitate that.
What I would suggest, given, given the fact that we have several weeks of winter between now and your next meeting, would be to authorize the interim town administrator to enter into a temporary agreement, as discussed, with neither side admitting anything, that the, the town would take temporary actions to main, to, to repair it suitable for snowplowing, contingent upon the, the signature of all of the owners of the property. I guess I'm just trying to leave a little bit of...
You should put in there, "public safety."
Yeah. Well, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
In order to maintain public safety.
And I think there, I guess there is no choice but to say, you know, every consent of all of the property owners, because otherwise, who are you going to decide who is, who can say yes and who can say no? But all of the property owners. And at least if we've got all but one, that's a start, and hopefully, they can help us track down the missing one. We've got property records or whatnot. We can hopefully find that, that person, and people can make sure that they, you know, give their contact information to the clerk before they leave tonight.
Yeah.
So, the motion, I know I went beyond the motion.
You can make a motion, yeah, though.
No, I was just gonna, I wasn't gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Could you ask a question?
No, go ahead.
You know, obviously, this is only a stop-gap measure. It's, it's something as, as, I want to make sure that everyone understands that this is not acceptance of Cynthia Avenue at this time. This is something that this council has to look at, not only for Cynthia Avenue, but for other similar streets in town. But again, I, I think that it's important enough that we do something to get this street safe. The other, the other thing is that obviously, we know that, you know, winter is going to be a long time, and to be able to get this done as quickly as possible, I'm going to ask Mr. Bellucci, hypothetically, if you were given the go-ahead tomorrow, how quickly could you impact this street?
Tomorrow.
You could begin tomorrow?
Yeah. I'll move bulldozes down there, and we'll start grading the road.
Okay, about how long would it take?
Two days to grade it, then we'll be back filling it. We'll probably have to road it. It's probably a week's worth of work, to do all the work.
Okay. Okay.
As long as it doesn't snow, obviously.
It's supposed to rain.
It's supposed to be in the 50s, too, so...
Yeah, so it's going to melt. That's once the agreement is in place. Well, I...
Yes.
Yes.
Can I ask the name?
I'll do it tomorrow.
What do you...
No. We're not...
No, don't, no. What do the residents think of this agreement? Do you think we'll get 100% approval? And I know, that's kind of hard, but seeing most of you are here, but one...
Is there anybody here that doesn't, that works?
Is there anyone that doesn't agree to this? And, okay.
I mean, it's better than...
And I'm asking so that I know how quickly this can be done. If, if anyone has huge objections, please speak out.
Yeah. I'm going to ask that, as Mr. Teich had said, before you leave, that you give your contact information to the acting town administrator slash town clerk, and the name of the individual who is that, so that she can contact that, and so we can get everybody's, at least, and I don't know if we can do this legally, Andy and Patrick, to get a verbal okay first before we actually have a signed...
Well, what I was going to say was written agreement, but I would include, when you say written agreement, I would include email, so that we can get, you know, so we can send this to someone, and they can email back saying, "Yes, I agree to it."
Right.
I would be, I would be willing to go with that.
Email and/or fax, similarly.
Right, so they didn't, they didn't have to, I'm just saying, say...
Yeah, so they don't have to, you don't have to sign a document.
They don't have to necessarily come into town hall immediately to do it. I want something in writing, but it doesn't have to be a personal signature in front of a notary.
And may I just request that Mr. Teich and I just go ahead, and we, I assume, Andy, you're going to be, I apologize, may I speak directly?
Yes, you may.
I assume, are you going to be drafting an agreement, or should I take a crack at and throw it to you, and you'll carve it up? Or did you want to have something in form that we could PDF out to people so that they understand what they're agreeing to, or what's the process?
Yes, yeah. Yes.
Who do you want to do it?
Yeah, I, I kind of assumed when I volunteered for this, that I'd be, I'll be drafting something tonight, and tomorrow morning, getting it out to you by tomorrow, by midday tomorrow.
I like that.
And then that, that way, as quickly as, you're notified via email or whatever, that you respond, you know, as quickly as possible. I'm talking to the, I'm talking to the residents.
I want everyone to understand that I do think that notifying you in November that we are no longer going to plow was unfair and unsafe, and that's why we are doing this. But we really do have to think of a solution and get the right people together. This is just a temporary fix, because I feel that this is a safety issue.
I think just to be clear, because we did discuss, they did discuss trash pickup being on Crandall Road, is that still going to be the case?
No, they're picking up trash all the way down there today. Yeah.
But will that stay that way? Because you did, you did discuss it going to end at Crandall.
Yeah, if the road is passable, then...
Well, they're doing it now.
Just to make that clear, because that was discussed earlier.
Yeah. I noticed it today.
Yeah.
Well, I'll...
Can I, I've got something written here.
Good.
If you just give me another moment.
Okay. I motioned, Andy, just...
Give me a moment. I, I would suggest a motion to authorize the town administrator to provide for a temporary repair of Cynthia Avenue, so as to allow safe passage of snowplows and public safety vehicles, to be conditioned upon written agreement of all property owners abutting Cynthia Avenue, that this action is not a declaration of town policy, and is not admissible against either the town or the property owners.
Okay.
And obviously, I'll elaborate in the actual document.
Right, also, what I was going to say, does not constitute acceptance.
Does not constitute acceptance of road.
Is not a declaration of town policy, and does not constitute acceptance of Cynthia Avenue. Avenue.
Or a waiver of the rights of all the parties here too.
Yeah, something like that. I was gonna.
Or a waiver.
Shall not constitute a waiver of the rights of any of the parties here too.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Give me a second, and then I'll reread the whole thing.
Is this the motion or the agreement?
This is the motion.
Well, this is the agreement, quote-unquote, to become the motion. Might as well just recycle.
No, 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 I was just going to say so moved.
With respect to.
Okay?
Acceptance.
I was just going to say so moved.
Leading the status of Cynthia Avenue. How's that?
Yeah. As long as we're all protected, that this is not.
This is a motion.
Is the authorize the administrator the right terminology?
Yes, I think so. Because you don't direct the DPW director.
Well, we can request that the administrator.
Yeah, we request the town administrator, acting town administrator.
I mean, we request the administrator to do the A, and then we authorize her to.
No. No, just stop.
Do you know what I mean?
Okay. So, here's what I've got so far. Motion to authorize and request the town administrator to provide for a temporary repair of Cynthia Avenue, so as to allow safe passage of snowplows and public safety vehicles, to be conditioned upon written agreement of all property owners abutting Cynthia Avenue, that this action is not a declarat, is not a declaration of town policy, and does not constitute acceptance of Cynthia Avenue, and is not admissible against either the town or the property owners, and shall not constitute a waiver of any of the parties here too as to the legal status of Cynthia Avenue.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I just, just want to say that.
I've said it 10 times.
Since the residents of Cynthia Avenue, I hope you understand that this council does care, and that we take things seriously. And it is very difficult sometimes to act or do things, because again, we are charged with the entire town of Tiverton. And we have to take that into account with, with all our decisions, that we have to do it for the benefit, for the greater good. But when it comes to health and safety, and then, and those who know me, I've said this for a long time, that is what I think is the first charge of any town council, is the health and safety of the residents of our town. So hopefully, you know, if you're all in agreement, then we can at least get this portion going, and then address the status of Cynthia Avenue as we gather up more information and look at it.
I think the big thing is, this was a change of what was happening and what was going forward. All the other stuff is not changed, there, there's no other street that's gotten so bad that you have to start it, there's nothing else that's started. So there's no reason that you should have any other streets in here next week or next meeting and so forth, because none of them.
From your mouth to God's ear.
Well, because, because none of them, none of them are having a change in circumstance.
Right, we haven't stopped plowing anywhere else, is that true? I don't even want to get.
Don't even go there.
Let's go back. Six years ago, you plowed. I have no idea.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just make sure, Andy's going to type up the agreement and share that with Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
And then, once they both agree, then it'll go to the residents?
Yes.
For approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, once we get 100% back, then that's when we.
Then the acting town administrator.
会给 directive.
Will, will give the directive to the DPW worker.
Yep.
Superintendent, whatever. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks very much, guys.
Andy? Andrew?
Budget.
Do, do we need to take a motion regarding the workshop?
Probably, yes.
Oh, you're continuing it?
Yeah.
You have to discuss date?
Yeah, yeah.
Tomorrow.
You don't legally need a motion, but if you want to practically pick a date, are you, are you continuing it to a date certain?
No, 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 I, well, I haven't even picked a date yet. It may not be till January at this point, you know? But, but again, I wasn't sure, because our agendas, that special meeting agenda, then workshop agenda, didn't have adjournment from one to the other.
Exactly.
So I'm saying, do we need a motion?
Oh, no, you don't need to adjourn the special meeting separately. The, the special meeting and workshop are just for your purposes. The Attorney General's Office makes no, the Open Meetings Act makes no distinction between a meeting is a meeting, no matter what you call it. The only thing you need to do.
But we can't, but we can't take any action in a workshop.
Only because of your own council.
Right.
Not because of any statement.
Yeah.
You can, you, you don't need to go adjourn and re-convene as a workshop. You can just go to it. All I would say is, if you, if you're picking a date, just continue it to the date. If you're not going to pick a date, just a motion to table, so it doesn't disappear. People wonder what happened to the town minutes.
Can we take a, like a 10-minute break so that the Madam Clerk can get the addresses? Names and addresses?
Actually, their attorney was doing it.
Are we going home?
I don't, I don't know if that.
Yeah, he was passing around.
Make sure you give us email or fax, addresses or fax numbers.
I move that we table the workshop agenda, discussion of five-year plan 2014-2015 budget and five-year capital plan with departments for the library and the fire department, until a future meeting as yet determined, undetermined.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.